Twenty-two. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag to be led by Ms. Roa Hassan. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being held in person and virtually and broadcast online through Microsoft Teams and through BCPSTV, which is Comcast Affinity, Channel 73, and Verizon FiOS, Channel 34. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. I would like to welcome our new board members, Ms. Felicia Stoluski from District 2. Thank you. And Ms. Roa Hassan, student member of the Board of Education for 2022-23. The first item on the agenda is a consideration of the June 14th agenda. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the July 12th agenda. Dr. Williams, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, I think one board member has a suggestion, Mr. McMillian. Ms. Joes.
Ms. McMillian?
Yes, Ms. Joes.
Thank you. I move to add to the agenda, item discussion on BAT and impacts to curriculum after item L and before item M.
I second. This is Scott.
Any discussion? Doesn't appear to be any discussion. Ms. Stifler, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Roa?
No.
Ms. Causey?
No.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Ms. Stoluski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
No.
Six favor.
The motion fails and the agenda stands as presented. Minutes of the closed session. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons. To number one, discuss that appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Seven, consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And nine, conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. The minutes of the closed session and information summary can be found on Board Docs under the Board Meeting Agenda Date. The next item on the agenda is personnel matters, and for that, I call on Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Vice Chairman McMillian, Superintendent Williams, and members of the Board. I would like the Board's consent for the following personnel matters: terminations, retirements, resignations, and leaves.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented in Exhibits D-1 through D-4?
So moved, Kuhn.
Mr. Kuhn, do I have a second?
Second, Hager.
Dr. Hager, any discussion? Mrs. Causey?
Can we separate item one?
Excuse me?
Can we separate item one?
I don't see why not.
How we would vote on two through four?
Excuse me?
And then you would vote on separate one and then do two through four.
Okay. So does she need a second to do that?
No.
Okay. So now we take a roll call vote?
For two through four.
Okay. So, Mrs. Stifler?
Ms. Roa?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack? Ms. Stoluski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ten in favor.
Okay. So how does that, how do we proceed with that, Ms. Anderson?
How we vote on one?
Excuse me?
Now we take a vote. You can ask for a vote on whether to approve the items in D-1.
Okay. So I need a motion for that, correct?
Yeah.
I need a motion to do that. Ms. Causey?
So moved, Roa.
Okay. And a second?
Second, Offerman.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Causey?
I'll be abstaining.
Excuse, I'm sorry, this is Makita Scott with a question.
Yes, Ms. Scott.
Yes, could you restate again what it is that we are approving? Just a quick recap.
It's D-1 terminations.
Okay. Just point of clarification. So D-1 terminations has been separated from two through four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so now we're voting on approving two through four?
Two through four just got approved. Now they'll be voting on number one, D-1.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Mrs. Causey was, any other discussion? Ms. Stifler?
Ms. Roa?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Abstain.
Ms. Mack? Ms. Stoluski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Nine in favor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is administrative appointments, and for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
Vice Chair McMillian and members of the Board, I am bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval. As you can see, we have invited many of our appointees here. The first category, four principals: Charles Mount Elementary School, White Oak School, George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology, and Chesapeake High School. Assistant Principals: General John Stricker Middle School, Middle River Middle School, Joppa View Elementary School, Oakley Elementary School, Catonsville Middle School, Hareford High School, Perry Hall High School, Metalwood Education Center, Huronwood Elementary School, Franklin High School, Dundalk High School, Randallstown High School, Mars Estates Elementary, Seven District Elementary, Newtown High School, Lansdowne Middle School, Deer Park Middle Magnet School, Chatsworth School, Northwood Elementary School, Parkville High School, Overly High School, Perry Hall High School, Timonium Elementary, Newtown Elementary, Featherbed Lane Elementary School, Middlesex Elementary School, Woodmore Elementary School, and the following central office positions: Manager, Office of Technology Operations; Director, Office of Employment Dispute Resolution; Director, Office of Technology Solutions Development; Specialist, School Programs, the Office of Title I; Director, School Climate, Office of Social Emotional Support; Manager, Officer, Office of Benefits and Retirement; two positions as Supervisors in the Office of Title I and Policy and Compliance Officer in the Office of Law.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit E-1?
So moved, Hassan.
Yes, a second?
Second, Offerman.
Mr. Offerman, a second. Ms. Stifler, any discussion? No discussion, Ms. Stifler?
Ms. Roa?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack? Ms. Stoluski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Favor, ten.
Thank you. So our first appointment is Sarah E. Edward Starkey as the Assistant Principal of Middle River Middle School. Please stand. Attending with her is her wife, Audria Edward Starkley. She has served Baltimore. Audria can stand too. Thank you. She has served, Sarah has served us for nine years, and recently she was the mathematics teacher at Dundalk High School. Now we can clap. Next appointment is Colleen R. Banks as the Principal of Charles Mount Elementary School. Please remain standing. And attending with her is her husband, Mikell, or Mikell Banks. Please hold your applause until I have completed my statement. We have thirty-plus appointments tonight, but I know we're all excited. So Ms. Banks is the Principal of Charles Mount Elementary School. She has served us for sixteen years. Previously, she was the Assistant Principal at Chase Elementary School. She brings service as a special ed teacher at General John Strickler Middle School, as well as Riverview Elementary School, and previous experience at Gersh Academy for one year. Congratulations, Colleen R. Banks. Next appointment is Bradley M. Bauer as the Assistant Principal, General John Stricker Middle School. Attending tonight is his wife, Laura Hummel. He brings to us fourteen years of experience. Previously, he was the teacher of special ed inclusion at General John Stricker Middle School. He also served at Perry Hall Middle School, Ridgely Middle School, and Rosedale Alternative Center. Congratulations. Next, we have Teresa Bradley. Please stand. There she is. As the Supervisor of Title I, in the Office of Title I, previously she served as the Specialist in Title I. She brings to us over twenty-seven years of experience in Baltimore County Public Schools. Previously, she served as a classroom teacher at West Chester Elementary School, Assistant Principal at Huronwood Elementary School, as well as teacher, stat teacher at Huronwood, Reisterstown, Huronwood again, and classroom teacher at Franklin Elementary, Glendon Elementary, and Hall State Academy. Congratulations. Next, we have Tiffany Cole as the Supervisor of Title I in the Office of Title I. Joining her is her husband, D'Angelo Fraser. She brings to us, actually, she is new to us. Welcome to Baltimore County Public Schools. She has served Baltimore City Public Schools for over twenty-three years. Welcome to Baltimore County Public Schools. Next, we have Mary E. Frey, Principal, White Oak School. Yes. Attending with Ms. Frey is Lisa Perry, Principal of Perry Hall Middle School. Ms. Frey has served twenty-three years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, she was the Assistant Principal at White Oak. She also served as Assistant Principal at Hareford Middle School, Ridgely Middle School, and a teacher of English at Ridgely Middle School. Congratulations, Mary E. Frey. Next, we have Jason P. Getz as the Assistant Principal of Catonsville Middle School. Attending is his wife, Monica Getz. He has served us, he has served ten years in Baltimore County. Previously, he was a special education teacher, inclusion at Solers Point Technical High. He's also been a consulting teacher at Lockraven High School, and a special ed self-contained teacher at Stemmers Run Middle School. Congratulations, Mr. Getz. Next, we have Cynthia Greenberg as the Assistant Principal at Hareford High School. Please stand. Maybe not. I must say that we did ask staff if, due to the weather, if they felt they needed not to come, not to come. So just want the Board to be aware. Ms. Greenberg is being appointed Assistant Principal at Hareford High School. She has served us for over five years. Previously, she was a mathematics teacher at Towson High School. Congratulations, Ms. Greensburg. Next, we have Rodney A. Harrison as the Assistant Principal at Middlesex Elementary School. He is new to Baltimore County Public Schools. Welcome. Previously, he served as a school counselor at Julius West Middle School in Montgomery County Public Schools, as well as a resource counselor at the National Academy Foundation for over five years. Is someone attending with you, Mr. Harrison? Oh, we got a lot. Thank you for joining us. The next candidate is Melissa K. Hatcher, Assistant Principal at Perry Hall High School. Please stand. Attending with her is her husband, Paul Hatcher. Previously, she served as the staff development teacher at Rosedale Alternative Center. She served as a science teacher at Crossroads Center, Kenwood, Pikesville High School, and Golden Ring Middle School. She brings to us twenty-four years of service in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Melissa. Next, we have Artist W. Huffman as the Assistant Principal of Metalwood Educational Center. Please stand. Attending with him is his wife, Sharonda Huffman. He brings to us nineteen years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, he was the resource teacher at Lansdowne Middle School. He served as a social studies teacher at Stemmers Run, as well as a special ed teacher at Stemmers Run, Deer Park Middle, and Woodlawn High School. He also served as a special ed teacher at Deep Creek Middle, and prior experience in Baltimore City Public Schools. Congratulations, Mr. Huffman. Next, we have Bernadette M. Hunter as the Director of the Office of Employment Dispute Resolution. Attending with her is her husband, Daniel Laughlin. Please stand. Thank you. She brings to us experience at Coleman and Salsier, PA for over, I'm doing the math, excuse me, fourteen, fifteen years. And she also has served, welcome back. She served as an English teacher at Dundalk High School and General John Stricker Middle School. Congratulations. Next, we have Megan B. Keller-Hoak as the Assistant Principal at Huronwood Elementary School. She brings to us five years of experience. Is she here today? She brings to us five years of experience. Previously, she was a special education inclusion teacher at Healthorp Elementary, as well as a self-contained teacher at Healthorp Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Keller-Hoak. Next, we have Kimbro I. Kelly as the Assistant Principal at Franklin High School. Joining him is his wife, Kelly Kelly? Did I get that right? Okay. Make sure that's correct. Thank you. He brings to us eight years of experience in Baltimore County. Previously, he served as a resource teacher at Milford Mill Academy. He also served as a special ed inclusion teacher, and he brings previous experience at Johns Hopkins University, as well as Baltimore City Public Schools. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Next, we have Sarah A. Kirby, Assistant Principal, Dundalk High School. There she is. Attending with her is her husband, Mike Kirby. Please stand. Thank you. She brings to us eleven years of service. Previously, she was a Spanish teacher at Lansdowne High School, as well as Parkville High School. She's had previous experience in Laurel School District. Congratulations, Ms. Kirby. Next, we have Kathleen M. Nauline, or Naulin, who's being appointed as the Assistant Principal of Seven District Elementary School. She brings seventeen, oh, I'm sorry. Attending with her is her husband, excuse me, Mr. Chris Horton. She brings to us seventeen years of service. She's been a staff development teacher at Pleasant Plains, as well as a classroom teacher at Elmwood Elementary School. Next, we have Aaron R. O'Tool-Trevas as the Principal of George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology. Attending with her, please stand. Attending with her is her husband, Mitchell Trevas. Previously, she served as the Principal of Parkville Middle School. She was the Assistant Principal at Dundalk Middle School. She's had experience as a special ed teacher and English teacher. Congratulations, Ms. O'Tool-Trevas. Next, we have Winston R. Park as the Assistant Principal of Newtown High School. Please stand. Mr. Park brings six years of experience in Baltimore County. Previously, he served as the resource teacher at Newtown High School, as well as a reading teacher at Windsor Mill Middle School. Congratulations, Mr. Park. Next, we have Kenesha S. Robinson as the Assistant Principal of Lansdowne Middle School. She brings to us five years of service. Previously, she serves as a mathematics teacher at Deer Park Middle School, as well as Windsor Mill and Lansdowne. Congratulations, Ms. Robinson. Next, we have Brianna Ross, 2021-2022 Teacher of the Year, being appointed as Assistant Principal at Deer Park Middle Magnet School. Attending with her? Attending with her is her mom, Lynette Ross. She brings seven years of service. Currently, or previously, she was the social studies, social studies teacher at Deer Park Middle Magnet, as well as a classroom teacher at Scotch Branch Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Ross. Next, we have Monica A. Roth as the Assistant Principal at Chatsworth School. Attending with her is her aunt, Thasina Guhar. I hope I said that correctly. You bring over ten years of service in Baltimore County. Currently, she was the specialist in reading. Previously, she served as the stat teacher at Chatsworth, as well as teacher of academic engagement in the Office of Title I, and classroom teacher at Lyons Mill Elementary and Randallstown Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Roth. Next, we have Michael J. Rupencamp as the Assistant Principal at Norwood Elementary. Attending tonight is his wife, Gina. He brings to us over sixteen years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, he served as a classroom teacher at Vincent Farm Elementary, Battle Grove Elementary, and Colgate Elementary. Congratulations, Mr. Rupencamp. Next, we have Sandra L. Schmidt as the Assistant Principal at Parkville High School. Attending tonight with her is her husband, Sam Wine Coop, Principal, Delaney High School. She brings to us twenty years of service. Previously, she was the specialist technology training in the Office of Technology Solutions Support. She served as a resource teacher in the Office of Digital Safety and Innovative Learning, as well as an English teacher at Pikesville High School, Holliburton Middle School, and classroom teacher at Woodlawn Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Schmidt. Next, we have David M. Soler as the Assistant Principal at Perry Hall High School. Attending with Mr. Soler is his wife, Stephanie Soler. He brings twenty years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, he was the physical education teacher at Newtown High School, Dundalk High School, and Deer Park Middle Magnet. Congratulations, Mr. Soler. Next, we have Stacy M. Torque as the Assistant Principal, Timonium Elementary School. Attending tonight with her is her husband, Jeremy Torque. She brings to us over fifteen years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, she served as a special ed teacher of inclusion at Cedarmere Elementary and Franklin Elementary. She served as a consulting teacher at Warren Elementary School, and several positions at Maze Chapel, Johnny Cake, Fort Garrison, Sandy Plains, and Seneca, oh, I'm about to say Seneca Valley, Seneca Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Torque. Next, we have Amy E. Tyler as the Principal of Chesapeake High School. Attending tonight is her husband, Jeff Tyler. Please stand. Previously, she served as the Assistant Principal at Parkville High School, also a guidance counselor at Parkville and Chesapeake High School, and a counselor at Chesapeake High School and Sparrows Point High. She brings to us fifteen years of service in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Ms. Tyler. Next, we have Amanda Cook, Assistant Principal, Joppa View Elementary School. She's watching virtually. She brings eight years of experience. She's been the resource teacher at Riverview Elementary School, special education inclusion teacher at Riverview Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Cook. Next, we have Gina N. Delegi, Assistant Principal at Oakley Elementary School. She brings to us ten years of service. She's watching virtually. She's previously served as a special ed teacher, inclusion at Oakley Elementary, as well as Vincent Farm Elementary School, and a classroom teacher at Vincent Farm Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Delegi. Next, we have Shakora U. Banks, Assistant Principal, Newtown Elementary School. She is new to us. She's watching virtually. Previously, she served as the academic planning facilitator in Baltimore City Public Schools, as well as a literacy intervention teacher and general teacher in Baltimore City Public Schools. Welcome to Baltimore County Public Schools, Ms. U. Banks. Next, we have Michael G. Fort as the Manager of Technology Operations, Office of Technology Operations. He brings to us twenty-eight years of service. He is watching virtually. Previously, he served as a supervisor in the Office of Technology Solutions, a specialist in the Office of Instructional Technology. He served as the area team leader in the Department of Technology, Science, Library of Science, Media at Campfield Early Childhood Center, and classroom teacher at Edmondson Heights Elementary School. Congratulations, Mr. Fort. Next, we have Latina M. Hall as Assistant Principal at Featherbed Lane Elementary School. She is new to us, and she is watching virtually. Previously, she served as the building coordinator at Elkton High School and Cecil County Public Schools, Assistant Principal at Hartford County Public Schools, and a special education teacher at Hartford County Public Schools. Welcome to BCPS, Ms. Hall. Next, we have Joslyn D. Lear as the Director of Office of Technology Solutions Development. She brings to us nineteen years of service in Baltimore County Public Schools. Previously, she served as the manager, learning solutions in the Office of Technology Solutions Support. She also served as the supervisor, applications, administrative, and support in the Office of Enterprise Application. She's also served as Assistant Principal at Towson High School, physical education teacher at Towson, and health teacher at Towson. Congratulations, Ms. Lear. Next, we have Danielle R. Maddox, Assistant Principal, Randallstown High School. She brings to us eighteen years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, she served as the Assistant Principal at Northwest Academy of Health Services, as well as a science teacher at Sudbrook Middle Magnet School and Golden Ring Middle School, as well as Pikesville Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Maddox. Next, we have April, April R. Megan. I believe she might be here. Yes. As the Specialist in School Programs in Office of Title I. Attending with her is her mentor teacher, Joyce Bowyer. Bowyer, thank you. Previously, Ms. Megan serves as the Windsor Mill Middle School Resource Teacher, as well as the art teacher before, at Middle, mid, sorry, Windsor Mill Middle School, Deer Park Middle Magnet, and she served at Imagine Discovery Elementary Charter, as well as Southwest Academy. She has had prior experience in Baltimore City Public Schools, and she brings eighteen years of service. Congratulations and welcome. Next, we have Alisa R. Michael as the Assistant Principal at Mars Estates Elementary School. She brings eleven years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, she served as a social emotional learning teacher at Mars Estates. She also served as the behavior intervention special ed teacher at Mars Estates, as well as the special ed self-contained. Congratulations, Ms. Michael. Congratulations, Ms. Michael. Next, we have Chandra Perkins as the assistant principal at Woodmore Elementary School. She is watching virtually, and she's new to Baltimore County Public Schools. Previously, she served as the instructional lead teacher at Arlington Public Schools, as well as the lead mentor, English language learner teacher. She served as the inclusion of classroom in Arlington, as well as Loudoun County Public Schools. She also brings years of service at Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School and Richardson Independent School. Congratulations and welcome, Ms. Perkins. Next, we have Dr. Kevin D. Roberts as the Director of School Climate in the Office of Socioemotional Support. He brings to us 31 years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, he served as the coordinator in the Office of Pupil Services and Responsive Student Programming. He's been an assistant principal, principal, and teacher all in various schools, including Dundalk Middle School, Deer Park Middle School, Middle River Middle School, Golden Ring, Southwest Academy, Lock Raven Technical Academy, and Woodlawn Middle and Old Court. He also served as a Spanish teacher at Old Court Middle School. Congratulations, Dr. Roberts. Next, we have Mary Shanahan as the manager of the Office of Benefits and Retirement. She is watching virtually, and she is new to Baltimore County Public Schools. Previously, she served as the manager of North America Benefits, Under Armour Incorporated, Operations Benefit, and Workers Compensation Manager in IKEA Global Shared Services, as well as the U.S. Benefits Manager at IKEA. Congratulations, Ms. Shanahan. Next, we have Michael G. Silverman, assistant principal, Overly High School. He is watching virtually, and he brings 10 years of service to Baltimore County Public Schools. Previously, he served as a physical education teacher at Milford Mill Academy, as well as a physical education teacher in Prince George's County and the Salisbury School. Congratulations, Mr. Michael G. Silverman. And we have Vicky L. Walsh as the Policy and Compliance Officer in the Office of Law. She is watching virtually, and she is new to us. Previously, she served as the Assistant County Attorney in Transactional Division, Baltimore County, in the Office of Law. She also has served as the Baltimore County Police Department Legal Director, the Assistant County Attorney in Litigation Division, the Honeywell Business Manager, Product Planning and Marketing Manager. She brings a wealth of experience. Congratulations, Ms. Walsh. Okay. Did I miss anyone? All right, 100%. Congratulations to all of our appointees tonight. So I know this is the awkward moment. Appointees, you do not have to stay for the board meeting. Congratulations.
I have an announcement to make before we move to the agenda. There's been a power outage affecting the whole area. BCPS TV is not on the air because of the storm. However, we are still streaming the board meeting from our website. Persons can access that through Board Docs. We thank you very much. We thank the public very much for their patience. Our next item is public comment. This is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. As appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by his staff. The Board of Education will conduct the public comment portion of the meeting by allowing those who registered to speak to attend in person. Registration was open to the public one week prior to tonight's board meeting and was closed at 3:00 p.m. yesterday for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to 10 the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are selected randomly using an electronic selection process from all registrations received within the designated timeframe. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Of course, if fewer than 10 registrants are received, all who registered will be permitted to speak. However, no speaker substitutions will be allowed. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of the board and this school system, this is not the proper form to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing dispute resolution processes as appropriate. I remind everyone that inappropriate personnel remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask speakers to observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the tone or see that time has expired. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time, and it could be turned off if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to public education in Baltimore County. If not selected, the public may submit their comments to the board members via email at b o e at b c p s dot org. More important information is provided on the board's website at b c p s dot org under Board of Education, Participation by the Public. I now call on our advisory and stakeholder group leaders to speak. Our first speaker is Billy Burke with CASE. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mr. McMillian, Superintendent Dr. Williams, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of CASE this evening. I'd like to begin by thanking BCPS for finalizing the contract negotiations and agreements with CASE. I am grateful that there is a commitment to a 3% COLA and step increases for our members. I still believe we can improve the negotiations and budget process, so I hope we can continue those discussions into the fall and the upcoming negotiations and budget cycles. The single most pressing issue that schools are facing is the staffing shortage. It affects everything from transportation to instruction to safety and behavior. I am grateful to Ms. Anderson and the HR staff for their commitment to holding as many hiring opportunities as possible. It is making a difference. But the staffing shortage is a national problem affecting schools and the workforce at large in our community. It is not likely that we will solve our teacher shortage or bus driver shortage this year. So some things need to change. Administrators, teachers, and parents need to know what the possibilities are. We cannot continue to schedule classes for teachers that don't exist. We need to prioritize special education programs and schools that are historically hard to staff. We should consider limiting course offerings based on available staff. We should explore scheduling options and allow for lecture format, enrichment periods, and study halls when they are appropriate and could provide relief. It would be important to have a standing committee or system meeting that reviews the impact of the staffing shortages on a weekly basis and has the power to make decisions and implement changes based on the needs of each school. I'd like to end by welcoming all new CASE members that have joined BCPS. If you are a teacher that has just moved into an administrative role or someone from outside BCPS that has joined our ranks, welcome. Your commitment to students and families is inspiring. We need you. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dr. Bosch Farone, Central AEAC.
Good evening to all and welcome to the two board members. You are lucky, really. I would like to talk to you today about Policy 1230. In my year as a chair of the Central Area, I did abide 100% with the letter and the spirit of that policy. The coordinator did not. That policy quotes, "The council reports directly to the Board of Education," which means you are my boss. And I always knew that and practiced that. The policy says the coordinator is appointed by the Board of Education who oversees the activities of the educational advisory councils. "Oversee" means watch, report. Coordinator is not my boss. Membership. Every effort should be made to ensure that the membership is representative and it's geographically balanced. To my eyes, as a person who analyzes things, the intent of the Board of Education is to have a diverse membership, not a membership of family and friends. Individual citizens, PTSA, other organizations, all of them, they can really recommend to the chair, myself, new members. And the recommendation basically should come directly to me, which is really not happening. Then, the duties of the members are really clear. Actively engage, gather information of the community, gather information about the system, about the issues, and submit reports to the chair, which is myself, every two months, which is really not happening because of the coordinator. The Board of Education supports the use of social media. Every YouTube I uploaded in relation to the activities of the Central Area is respectful, factual, informative, and is done for the purposes of what this policy means by the letter and by the intent. And, Mr. Vice Chair, I will continue the rest in my public comments, unless you allow me to continue.
Thank you, Dr. Bosch. Our next speaker is Ruben Daniele, a BCPS student. Ruben. He might have been delayed with the storm. Okay, next is general public comments. And our first speaker is Vernon Fisher. Good evening, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Williams, parents, and administrator. My name is Vernon Fisher, and I belong to the Cap Alpha Psi Fraternity Organization, Towson-Catonsville Alumni Chapter. Thank you for allowing our organization the opportunity to speak with you again on our partnership with BCPS efforts to support your strategic plan, the compass, our pathway to excellence, which promotes community engagement and memberships. Since receiving Dr. Williams' invitation in October of 2021 to partner with BCPS to support your students, the Towson-Catonsville Alumni Chapter has met with students at Dunbarton and Lansdowne Middle Schools. At Dunbarton Middle School, we talked about the importance of having, knowing, and developing one's purpose, and we plan to continue looking at what it takes to become successful in the occupations the students showed interest in, with the intent of placing them on course to obtaining the education and skill set necessary to further their enlightenment. We also plan a STEM event in late fall. At Lansdowne Middle School, TCAC collaborated with the principal, Frank Dunlap, and teacher Sean Woodland on their STEM project, Titanic Rescue, which kids designed hypothermia-resistant flotation vests for the acts and figures from Household Materials, and then had to build and operate transport vehicles made of LEGO materials and drones provided by our technology partner, Passit On. TCAC, in collaboration with BCPS, leadership and administrators will continue partnering to produce opportunities for students to learn and become creative, thereby changing the narrative of students to becoming future successful citizens. We have a curriculum that offers learning opportunities on a range of topics as follows: self-identity, purpose, training, competition, social, health education, empowerment, economic empowerment, and college and careers. Our fraternity has recently celebrated its 100th year of our God-Rite program, our mentoring program. It's the oldest and most successful mentoring program in the country, serving over 500,000 students to date. We strongly believe that we are impactful in mentoring students through our programs. Our objective is to create next generation of leaders through leadership development, prepare students for college and vocational occupations, mentor students through college graduation to positively impact youth through mentoring and training, to prepare you for academic success in middle school, high school, and college, to learn by interaction, doing in group dynamics. Our organization's key objectives are to assist young men in their efforts to reach their full intellectual, academic, and leadership potentials as students and members of the community, which we provide through focused programs and mentorship. Let me reiterate Q's comments from the last board meeting that Dr. Williams' invitation was in perfect alignment with these aims. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Bosch Farone.
The policy also states that my term in office is at least three years. I have been a chair for one year, elected by legitimate vote. Now I have been reportedly removed by illegitimate vote a few weeks back, organized by the coordinator. The coordinator function is clearly stated. Coordinator may not simultaneously serve as a member of the education advisory area. She is an ex-officio member, which means she comes in, sits, listens. If there is something really serious, she would report to you. In reality, the coordinator is functioning as a co-chair, if not a chair, and that is destructive to the Central Council. Application process. It's really clear, the application process. Anyone interested in being a member in an advisory council needs to basically send the request to me. That's not really the case that happened. It's always been pushed by the coordinator and one of her close friends, which means people are being proposed are because they are family members and friends. Now, I really don't know about you. I am as American as the apple pie. I hate where I came from because of nepotism and cronyism. And I don't stand for that as a chair of the Central Area. All what I have done in my past year is really to make this policy mean something good for the students. I complied 100%. Coordinator did not. I respectfully ask you to vote for me. And if you did not, I am not leaving this place. because I really believe in what I'm doing. I don't need to be recognized, although it would be nice. I will continue one way or the other. I respectfully request you read what I send you, call me, email me, ask me, but at the end of the day, I have done nothing wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. T. Russell Hopewell. Good evening, Mr. Hopewell.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Williams, Vice Chair, Mr. McMillan, and members of the school board. My name is T. Russell Hopewell, and it's an honor to address you this evening. As a former teacher, administrator, and principal that has worked in BCPS for over 30 years, I bring an informed and experienced perspective as to what I see happening in BCPS, the state, and nationally. We have seen unprecedented changes to school systems globally during the past two to three years due to COVID pandemic. School systems globally are forced to implement virtual learning and move away from in-person instruction, which no one was prepared for. School systems had to deal with unprecedented national teacher shortages, bus drivers, nurses, counselors, social workers, and other school employees, the likes we have never seen before, and along with the pandemic, retirements, and resignation of workers. I believe strongly in getting everyone in the boat and rowing together to address and fix the issues that we all see. I am not immune from hearing public voices calling for a search for a new superintendent. I feel very strongly that this approach is premature, misguided, ill-informed, and sets a very bad precedent for public officials to weigh into what is obviously the elected and appointed school board decision. BCPS has experienced a high turnover of superintendents in the past five, six, five to six years. I believe Dr. Williams is the fourth. Now is certainly not the time for new leadership, and we need now, more than ever, stability and continuity at the top. We need the institutional knowledge and the experience of Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams should be commended for successfully navigating the 24th second-largest district in the country through arguably the most challenging time BCPS has ever faced, a global pandemic that is still with us, and if that was not enough, simultaneously a catastrophic cybersecurity attack that devastated BCPS operations. Dr. Williams with the board, school board, navigated the system to return to virtual learning in record time after a cyber attack with students losing minimum instructional time. I am president of the Simmons Museum of Negro League Baseball in Orange Mills, and want to thank Dr. Williams and Ms. Debbie Phelps for inviting the museum to partner in the BCPS Education Foundation Play Ball Event at the George Washington Carver High School that supports our students, teachers, and BCPS. These are the types of partnerships that we all need, all of us in the boat rowing together, not throwing people under the bus. We are at a critical crossroads in education and cannot afford to change captains in the middle of the voyage. We need stability. Let's continue to support Dr. Williams and the school board and give them the tools and resources that they need to be successful and continue to build years we have all seen, on the progress that we have seen through arguably the most challenging years we have seen, not just in schools but in society. In closing, I feel Dr. Williams should be given an opportunity to continue the course as B C superintendent. Thank you, and have a productive board meeting.
Thank you. Navaya Johnson. Ms. Johnson. Sharon Serhoff. Lisa Mosley. Good evening, Ms. Mosley.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Vice Chair McMillan, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. My name is Lisa Norrington Mosley. I am a teacher in Baltimore County Public Schools. I will be entering my 36th year as a classroom teacher in August and my 30th year at Patapsco High School and Center for the Arts. I bleed red, white, and blue. Go Patriots! BCPS, we have a problem. How many classroom positions will go unfilled on the first day of school? What is the difference between a classroom teacher who is highly qualified, certified, tenured, who is in their 29th year versus the one that's in their 30th year? A step. Have you opened up your cellphone bill or your cable bill to find that it went up about $60 or $80? You call them and you ask them, "Why is my bill so high?" And they tell you that the promotional time has ended? And you've watched TV and you know that for $99, they're now offering this deal with a $250 gift card. So you call them and you try to negotiate, and guess what they say? "It's not for you. It's only for new customers." How did you feel? Salty. That's how we felt, and I say "we" collectively. I'm not representing anybody. I'm not a union. But I am an exclusive club of the 30-plus years of a classroom teacher. There's not many of us, and we do not feel valued. We came to school this year and did not get a single penny in our paycheck. Why? Because the step stops at 30. As I stated, I'll be going into my 36th year without a step increase. And I want you to look at this face because President Sexton has talked about us, those of us who have not gotten a step, and I want you to know, it's real. I love my job. We love our job. I know that I have colleagues who are willing, or they believe willing, to come back maybe a year or two. Can you imagine that if we had those teachers who are eligible at 30 feel valued, that there's a step or some type of bonus to come back, that maybe they'll come back for a year, two years, three years? What would that do if you had those tenured and certified teachers with experience in those classrooms? Please tell me. Many teachers, oh, and by the way, it was an extra piece of salt in our skin when everyone got $1,000, but yet you would not give us a step. Many teachers who start right after college are 22, 23, 24, which means in 30 years, we're 52. We're still viable, and we are still good for our students and the system. So please make it right. Please ask me, and I will be more than happy to help work with retention of veteran teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Marrow. Good evening.
Good evening. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. On behalf of the community in which I live, as a stakeholder, a grandparent of students in the Baltimore County Public Schools, a community organizer, and a chairperson of the Outreach and Networking Advisory Committee of the Highlanders Professional Black Women Incorporated, I come to speak in support of Dr. Williams, the superintendent of the BCPS, who is attempting to move the system forward while addressing some issues that predate his appointment. Dr. Williams has served well as the BCPS superintendent during a period of uncertainty brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, indeed, one that the entire world has had to adjust, and specifically, the students, teachers, and staff of the BCPS. He has demonstrated logic, skill, and commitment to our system as a visionary, innovator, and has been transparent in his duty. He has overseen the implementation of the Blueprint for Maryland Plan, House Bill 1300, passed by the Maryland General Assembly, intending to enhance and improve local investments in our public school system. He knows it would be, or could bring, needed resources and support to our schools. He's moving to expand our K-12 programs. He has worked to certify that our graduating students are prepared for college and/or careers. Dr. Williams has focused on support for the special education programs and also for gaining additional support for needed teachers and staff. Dr. Williams has implemented the BCPS Efficiency Study to streamline the BCPS administration in order to save millions of dollars while increasing system-wide efficiency and effectiveness for teachers to teach and students to have an opportunity to learn during a strained and difficult time brought on by the pandemic. Finally, Dr. Williams has collaborated with the Canon Design Movement, which provides services for a range of projects in headquarters, advances in K-12 educational opportunities, and facilities. He has implemented Multi-Year Improvement Plan, which is strategically designed to meet capital needs for our schools, which include building projects, replacements, renovations, and maintaining focus on needs of our schools. These things are global, and a contemporary superintendent must function strategically, be a visionary, be multi-skilled, be communicative, and committed to his task. I believe he is such a person. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Adams. Derek Burnett. Ramona Basilio. Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Good evening, Members of the Board, Dr. Williams, family members, guests, and community people. I want to first welcome the new members to the board, particularly our newest student member. Welcome. I just, I always start, most of my students know, I start two comments and a challenge. My comment to you is have courage and continue to be kind. Welcome. I'm here for two reasons. First, I want to thank Dr. Williams and the board for hearing us when we spoke about Deer Park Middle Magnet's overcrowded situation. I represent a coalition of parents, former PTA persons, students and alumnis, and instructors. Throughout the past few months, Dr. Williams, his staff, community members, the teachers, the leadership, and you all have helped us to pay attention to the fact that 1,600 students in a middle school built for 1,300 is too many. It is not safe. You heard us. You rose above. Mr. Dixit and his staff, and Mr. Paul Taylor helped us to do and is implementing a boundary study. So my comment again is thank you, thank you, thank you. And especially to you, Dr. Williams. I've seen you roll up your sleeves, and you've been there. My challenge is, when the boundary study approaches this OGS committee, please take a look at it. In 60 days, we'll be looking at it. We'll be fair. We'll have equity. We'll make decisions in the best interest of students and the community. I challenge you, in February, when it comes across your desk, look at it with a lens towards equity, with a lens towards students, with a lens towards academic excellence. Please do that. My second reason for being here is to support 1270 participation, community involvement. It is aligned with the National PTA. It is part of a plan that we've had for several years. Dr. Williams, I want to thank you for keeping the compass. I remember a critique years ago when you first started the compass, and it was, "How is he supposed to do all of those things in the middle of a pandemic?" Vision and having a compass that is liquid, that's fluid, that rolls with the tide, and that stays afloat. Thank you for everything that you've done for Baltimore County Schools, for our community, and for having the vision, and when you put it in record that we're going to serve diverse communities. We're going to serve students who have language difficulties. We're going to serve special needs students. We're going to form partnerships. You helped us to ride the tide. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is public comment on board policies. There was no one signed up to speak on Policy 5562 this evening. Our first speaker on board policy, 3540, which is Energy Conservation and Sustainability, is Ruben Daniele. Okay. We move on. Next is public comment on board policy, 4103, Child Abuse and Neglect. Sharon Serhoff. Next is public comment on board policy, 7250, School Building Design. School Building Design. Ruben Daniele. And Melissa Powell. Okay. So those people aren't present. We're going to move on. To G, which is the next item on the agenda, is the superintendent's report, and for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
So good morning and good evening. It's been a long day. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Vice Chair McMillan and members of the board, and we too welcome our two new members to the board, as well as all of our staff, students, and families that make up BCPS community. As a system, we exist to ensure every student walks away with skills and strategies to navigate their chosen path successfully. To achieve that goal, we must create the climate and conditions to ensure high-quality teaching and learning that leads to academic achievement. So, this month's superintendent's report is a video capturing our efforts and outlining our next steps. Team BCPS, I hope that you are enjoying a relaxing summer. July 1 was the first day for our many newly-appointed school-based and central office staff. Please join me in welcoming these outstanding leaders who bring unique perspectives and expertise to the system. As we prepare for the 2022-2023 school year, it is important that we take a moment to reflect on the 2021-2022 school year. After nearly two years of virtual learning, we opened our doors last August for five-day in-person learning. The year brought both triumphs and challenges as we focus on recovery, rebuilding, and healing. Let's review some key highlights of the 2021-2022 school year. In August, we held our administrators and supervisors' meeting to kick off the school year and review our shared vision. On August 30, we welcomed nearly 111,000 students back into our school buildings and classrooms. In September, as part of our commitment to excellence and continuous improvement, we issued a joint statement with all employee associations that outlined our course of action in response to the Public Works LLC Efficiency Review. The release of the statement launched a seven-month multi-stakeholder review and implementation of the recommendations. In October, we held a system-wide virtual community town hall to discuss school safety and efforts to build safe and welcoming learning environments for all. We followed up that conversation with three zone-specific town halls to answer questions from the community and share critical resources and information. In November, with the support of our board, we approved Staff Wellness Days to provide members of Team BCPS with additional opportunities to rest and recharge. We also worked with our county executive, Johnny Ochesky Jr., on incentives for all American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, which in addition to bus drivers, includes food and nutrition workers, groundkeepers, and building service workers. In December, we approved retention bonuses for all BCPS employees to provide greater support and recognition of our staff. In January, BCPS, like other school systems across the nation, faced significant operational challenges because of the Omicron surge. Yet, despite those challenges, we kept school buildings open and worked through a small number of individual temporary transitions to virtual learning. Also, in January, I presented my rec- Also, in January, I presented my recommended fiscal year 2023 budget to the Board of Education. This budget was focused on people and the progress of our system. In February, we launched our Blueprint for Maryland's Future webpage that shares our implementation plan and provides students, staff, and families with the most current information regarding the implementation of Blueprint. In March, we completed the realignment of central office to strengthen supports to schools. We also appointed a senior bilingual communication specialist to improve and expand our outreach to Spanish-speaking families. In April, we held a responsive middle school summit and began to pilot new safety assistant roles in key middle and high schools. This fall, all secondary schools will have safety assistants working with school administrative teams and SROs to foster safe and positive school environments. In May, we held commencement ceremonies to celebrate more than 7,000 BCPS seniors. In June, our schools successfully wrapped up this unprecedented school year with well-deserved end-of-the-year celebrations and promotion ceremonies. We appointed dozens of new school-based and central office leaders and held our 25th Annual Safe School Conference, where more than 900 staff members gathered virtually to hear from students, community partners, and leading experts. School teams will use the information provided at the conference to support climate, equity, and safety in their schools. A wide variety of summer programs for students and professional learning opportunities for staff are underway. Our summer meal program continues to support families, and our school-based, central office, and operations teams are busy preparing for the 2223 year. The summer months are a crucial time for Team BCPS staff. We remain steadfast in our commitment to continuous progress and improvement and are looking ahead to a number of key initiatives, including a partnership fair in July, the launch of the Leadership Pathways for Paraeducators, and BCPS Fest, which brings thousands of BCPS families together to kick off the new school year. I am proud of these accomplishments, but I know there is much more work to be done. I remain committed to working with all members of Team BCPS and our community to improve efficiencies and effectiveness in support of students, staff, and families. For the 2022-2023 school year, our efforts will include the following: fostering safe and supportive learning environments. Key features of our safety plan include: grant-funded student safety assistance in all secondary schools, focus on relationship-building, proactive adult presence, and de-escalation strategies; increasing understanding of the code of conduct, and greater consistency in the application of guidelines across schools; enhancing community partnerships to provide positive in-school experiences at arrival, lunch, and dismissal; revamped procedures to effectively communicate outcomes related to bullying and harassment investigations; increased alternative educational options for students in need of wraparound supports; providing staff refresher training in de-escalation strategies, and expanded self-regulation support and strategies for students; improving transportation services. We will continue to work in partnership with Baltimore County Government and local districts to find solutions to address the shortage of bus drivers and attendance. These efforts include increased compensation, bonuses, and removal of pre-employment barriers. Proposed service adjustments for the fall, along with a comprehensive communications plan, are expected to result in significant improvements in service to families. Addressing staff climate and morale, we've worked with the employee associations throughout the year to build a culture of collaboration and problem-solving. Together, we identified organization climate goals for the upcoming year, developed a comprehensive plan that addresses organizational climate, worksite engagement, recognition, and wellness for all members of Team BCPS, identified ongoing opportunities for staff retention and wellness, including bonuses, wellness breaks, and support to schools. These are just a few examples of our priority work for the upcoming school year. At the core of our work is student achievement, ensuring that we continue to raise the bar, close achievement and opportunity gaps, and prepare all students for their future. Excellence in student achievement is grounded in effective and responsive teaching of a rigorous, inclusive curriculum aligned to standards. We are intensifying our efforts to increase students' access and opportunity to pathways that prepare them for college and career. Team BCPS, working together, we can and will build a system that is among one of the highest performing in the nation. Every member of Team BCPS has value and makes important contributions toward BCPS becoming a world-class school system. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you. I would like to thank the BCPS team, Mr. McMillian, for all their work. Let's acknowledge that.
The next item on the agenda is the chair's report, which we can postpone until the next meeting, and we save five minutes. The next item is the student board members' report. And for that, I call on Ms. Rohan Hassan.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to extend my gratitude to my colleagues here on the board, those in the audience, those watching at home, and most importantly, to the students of BCPS. A few months ago, I was elected as the 42nd BCPS student member of the Board of Education. And on July 1, I took my oath of office to become your colleague and the student member representing 111,000 students. It is an immense honor and a privilege to be here today and every day of my tenure, and I truly look forward to getting to work with each and every one of you. Almost a year ago, I was on the other side of this dais, sitting impatiently, ready to give my first public comment to this very board with a couple of different members. Over three years ago, I decided that I was going to work tirelessly to hold the seat that I currently hold. Today serves as my official day one as the student member of the board, and I intend to begin with the same passion I had years ago, advocating for justice and change for our students. As I hold this seat, it is also my responsibility to be candid with all of you. We must acknowledge the truth. We are a house divided. I've seen this board, and I've seen the tension and dysfunction that it entails. I've seen division in a space where we cannot afford to be divided. Abraham Lincoln said that a house divided cannot stand. Board members, we cannot stand for the students of BCPS, for all 111,000 students who enter their educational systems expecting success and safety at the bare minimum. Board members, we are not providing that. This board values politics over non-partisanship. It values personal bias and cliques over professionalism. And the lack of respect from this entire dais is disappointing as it hinders our work to actively improve BCPS. When I look across the dais from this side, I see a Board of Education that does not actively put the students first, despite the fact that it is our job. I see a board that lacks consideration for the student voice and its respective power. I hold this seat on the board not to represent myself, but to represent 111,000 students. That is my job and should be your responsibility as well. Regardless of whatever district you represent, your job will always be to fight for the students unconditionally, unwaveringly, and compassionately. Our students deserve a voice in every matter we discuss, and our needs deserve to be adequately and completely met. And I look forward to championing some of the changes we desperately deserve. We must begin to shift priority to work that promotes our students and their respective needs. It is past time we discuss matters of school safety, of inclusive curricula at every level. It is past time we discuss the fact that students walk into their school buildings in fear of being shot to death. Students walk into their schools in fear that they will be targeted for their race, religion, gender, and sexual orientation. We have students who experience sexual assault, students who experience mental health struggles, and their needs are not being met. In meeting with these students over the course of the past few months, I can definitively say that these students do not feel heard by our institution. Therefore, I must ask, what are we doing if not fighting empathetically and unequivocally for our students? We must truly begin to listen to one another and to all of our stakeholders, or else we are doomed to fail our students. We must reach a point where our actions come from both rationality and empathy. All of us on this board have one thing in common. We are here to serve in the best interest of the students, of BCPS. My role is to do the same with one addition. I directly represent our needs, priorities, and best interests, and I'm the only board member with the ability to do so completely. I'm not waiting until December to begin fighting, nor do I intend to postpone addressing all student needs. Board members, with your collaboration, we're getting to work. Being on the side of the dais with you is truly the actualization of a dream for me. I cannot express how excited and ready I am to get to work, championing the much-needed changes we will achieve. I look forward to introducing bold resolutions and ensuring that my voice is not the only student voice at the table this year. My term will mark necessary change as I promise BCPS one thing. I will bring fire, and I will bring passion to the board as I unequivocally fight for the students of Baltimore County Public Schools. I hope you join me in doing the same. Thank you all. Let's get to work.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session. And for that, I call on Mr. Mercedes.
Good evening. Earlier tonight, the board met in closed session in its quasi-judicial capacity to render a decision in case number HE 22-18. Now would be the appropriate time to confirm the vote taken in closed session.
May I have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session on the hearing examiner's case HE 22-18?
So moved, Row.
And authorize Ms. Gover to sign for those board members, excuse me, authorize Ms. Stifler to sign for those board members not physically present.
So moved, Row.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second hand, Offerman.
Mr. Offerman. Any discussion? No discussion. May I have a roll call vote, Ms. Stifler?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Stoluski?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott? Ms. Scott? Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Favor of nine.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the transportation update. And for that, I call on Dr. Williams and Dr. Yarborough.
So, good evening, board members. The purpose of tonight's transportation update is to educate, inform, and provide a brief report on the current state of BCPS transportation. So this presentation will cover the following five aspects of our work: the scope of transportation, bus, school bus inspection review, service challenges, BCPS response, and next steps. So tonight, I invite Dr. Yarborough, our deputy superintendent, to provide details on our current implementation status and an overview of our comprehensive plans. We have a short presentation.
Good evening, everyone. There we go. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair McMillian, and members of the board. The mission of the Office of Transportation is to provide safe and efficient school transportation services. Next slide, please. Thank you. In an environment that fosters positive social interaction and allows students to be successful learners. This slide provides an overview of the scope of work. The Office of Transportation transports over 77,000 students twice a day, operates approximately 785 bus routes, approximately 645 are BCPS, with 140 being contracted, services over 200 schools every day, including facilities in Howard County, Harford County, Frederick County, and Baltimore City, operates and maintains over 800 buses at 11 facilities, and we partner with six school bus contractors who supplement BCPS service. Next slide, please. The safety of BCPS school buses was the subject of one media's outlet's attention this past school year. As reported in March, the Office of Transportation participates in a comprehensive annual inspection process. Our school buses are inspected daily. Drivers complete pre-trip and post-trip inspections. These inspections often identify issues from trip to trip. When a school bus driver identifies an issue, they communicate the issue with the fleet staff, who determine if the bus needs to be pulled from service and when the repair will be completed. This happens, again, almost on a daily basis. In addition to pre-trip and post-trip inspections and repair tickets that our bus drivers and lot staff submit to fleet staff, all school buses in the state of Maryland are subject to four inspections each year, one type A and three type B. The difference between an A and a B is an A is considered a major inspection, and it includes removing tires from the vehicle as reported in March. Although M.MVA notes inspection results is pass/fail, reporting pass/fail is not standard. There are three categories used most frequently for inspections: pass, 30-day repair, and major defect. While a 30-day repair and major defect are technically considered a fail, a 30-day repair is very different. A torn seat, a clearance light, the contents of a first aid kit, or an LED light could technically fail an inspection and be noted for a defect. However, it would still be operable within the 30-day repair category. This means that the bus continues to operate, and M.MVA's expectation is that the bus will be repaired within 30 days. We know that there was misinformation reported about fuel tank strap inspection failures on buses, as shared in November and again in March. As soon as we received questions about fuel tank straps, out of an abundance of caution, the Office of Transportation immediately removed the identified bus from services. They consulted with the manufacturer and the Maryland State Police, as well as M.MVA, in addition to reviewing COMAR. All of the straps were repaired, reinforced, or replaced on the 52 identified buses. None of the straps were cited in the M.MVA's random inspection, and those that were repaired would arguably have not failed inspection because they were still secure according to the definition of COMAR. Since Transportation has updated the board in March, two additional type B inspections have occurred, one later on in March and another one June, which were extremely successful. They have, our inspections have been completed using a new internal BCPS form, of which you can see a snapshot of on the slide. This form is more closely aligned with COMAR's expectations, and it is based on feedback from M.MVA as a result of the initial random inspection. As part of the normal protocol, M.MVA was onsite during the inspections in June. The Office of Transportation is also excited to report that it will be partnering with M.MVA in transitioning to an electronic record-keeping means of entering and tracking inspections by 2023. Next slide, please. To be clear, our goal is to provide safe, reliable, timely service for all eligible students in BCPS. Recent efforts to deliver on this goal have been impacted by issues depicted on this slide. However... However, longstanding challenges to operations have included full technology integration and comprehensive routing procedures. To provide critical context, it is important to note that service-related issues were identified as early as 2001 through an organization study conducted by MGT of America and persisted in several subsequent reports, including the MSDPier Transportation Study of 2013, Office of Inspector General Reports from 2015 and 2020, and, most recently, the Efficiency Review Report. In 2019, BCPS took steps to try to resolve these issues through the hiring of a new Director of Transportation, development of a task force, and thorough examination of practices and procedures. Unfortunately, the pandemic significantly impacted operations in March of 2020. During the following school year, the Office of Transportation met community needs through the daily distribution of food and technology. Throughout this time, the Department of Transportation, in collaboration with county government, worked together to develop an initiative to meet identified safety and overall operational efficiency needs. The proposed initiative was not approved in the summer of 2020 and November of 2021. Following that decision, the Department of Transportation worked with partners across the state of Maryland and reached out to large districts outside of Maryland to collaborate and problem-solve related issues. Again, we are deeply committed to improvements in timeliness, efficiency, and safety for this fall. This additional information is provided to ensure that Team BCPS community is fully informed of the ongoing and tireless efforts of the transportation staff. When you combine a national shortage of school bus drivers with ongoing leaves for pandemic-related illnesses, other approved leaves, and ongoing callouts from work, there is a direct impact on service. In neighboring districts, they have canceled or eliminated routes or school bus service as a result of these circumstances. While late service is not our goal, we respect and understand that many students need our services, families rely on us, and our team works day in and day out to transport 77,000 students. Every day, our team is focused on the mission of serving students. We adjust and problem-solve in real time to support our bus drivers as they double and triple back and combine trips and routes to transport our students. On an average day this past school year, 205, or 26% of our routes, needed coverage. Next slide. BCPS has actively worked throughout the year to respond to these challenges. We have employed an all-hands-on-deck model with all transportation staff who have CDLs and are willing to drive covering routes. Our ongoing work has included a thorough review of our current practices and needs to increase efficiency. To that end, we have hired two consultants who are transportation experts to support our efforts. This collaboration has resulted in service adjustment recommendations to help guide our next steps. We have used the identified recommendations to engage in a series of collaborative meetings with the board, staff, students, and parents to solicit and incorporate stakeholder feedback. This slide details participants to date. As we prepare for the 22-23 school year, we are committed to providing ongoing updates to our community and elected officials. Next slide. Examination of existing reports, staff-focused groups, and feedback from additional staff, students, and community members have identified the following primary needs for transportation: maximizing safety on buses. We must reaffirm our commitment to mutual respect for all staff and consistently address student disciplinary infractions with timely responses to bus drivers and attendants. A range of responses will include removal from the bus for actions that impair safety or are continuing. Overcome driver shortages through targeted recruitment and competitive retention practices. We must leverage technology for communication by drivers, the Office of Transportation, and community members, and ultimately measure the quality and reliability of our levels of effectiveness. Addressing these needs will improve efficiency, including timely arrival of service as the primary goal, communication with stakeholders, and consistent responses to bus behavioral In partnership with county government, we addressed pre-employment barriers and announced increased compensation, incentives, and bonuses in October. A summary infographic shared with Transportation staff is on this slide. Additional financial incentives, including a $750 summer stipend for drivers and attendants, and an enhanced compensation package for the upcoming year aimed to ensure that BCPS remains competitive. We have implemented several strategies to attract new staff and incentivize existing staff. More than 25 transportation-targeted recruitment efforts have occurred to date. This spring, we invited additional contractors to bid on school bus routes to support existing service needs. This effort resulted in the coverage of six additional routes. We have also made organizational changes to address the shortages, including the dedication of two human resource staffers focused on operations and the reclassification of routing assistance to enhance competitiveness. This summer is Operation Yellow Bus. New features in particular include part-time shift flexibility from 15 to 25 hours, hourly rate for part-time and substitute employees effective July 1 is commensurate with the years of experience as opposed to a flat rate, retire/rehire hourly rate is commensurate with years of experience, and we have increased the monthly attendance incentive. Bus attendants also play a critical role in transportation. We're actively recruiting additional attendants. We are inviting our paraeducators and adult assistants to join us for AM or PM shifts, and we are being flexible to work with paraeducators and adult assistants in their existing schools to supplement their opportunities in BCPS. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, we have engaged in a number of collaborative discussions to review service adjustments and have moved forward with implementation on many process improvements to deliver on our commitment to improve service this fall. To date, we have engaged in the following: updating discipline reporting and infraction consequence guidance, reviewing and resetting routing procedures and practices. This includes a current upgrade in Route Finder software that is used to support routing. We started the spring with a pilot of a mobile and web-based application with 11 routes. I'm proud to report that we have moved to 45 routes this summer and plan for 145 routes shortly thereafter. This provides upgraded communication and real-time data to students and families and schools, two-way radio bus implementation for real-time communication on the buses to the Office of Transportation, aligning all magnet service with Rule 6400 utilizing We started the pilot of multi-function school activity buses in four high schools. This is for non-to and from-school service, which will allow greater flexibility at no cost to students and does not require a CDL to transport students. So this will be helpful for meets and different small-team events, extending the middle school AM drop-off window to 30 minutes before the school's start time, and formally extending the high school drop-off window. We are able to do this in secondary schools because we will have safety assistance for direct supervision of students. Confirmation of ridership, as is occurring in neighboring districts, we are starting with a pilot. Approved expanded use of alternative school vehicles and other technology that supports communications and overall operations. Future service adjustment considerations include, but are not limited to: if necessary to cancel a route, communicate the known cancellation the night before for adequate planning time, exploring changing the middle school and high school non-transported zones. You'll see on the slide a analysis of local school systems and what their walk zones are for middle school and high school students, and examining all school start times as a part of additional transportation efficiencies for the 23-24 school year. We will continue to engage in collaborative discussions with stakeholders on these identified considerations in order to determine next steps. In summary, our priorities include increased efficiency, timely service, maximize safety, and enhance communication. We are moving forward with short-term and long-term solutions. Short-term solutions include the increased compensation and targeted recruitment, two-way radio implementation in all buses, discipline referral reporting and consequence matrix. The Northeast will begin with the confirmation of ridership, magnet hub stops, extending the high school and middle school morning window with safety assistance supervision. Long-term solutions include, but are not limited to: system-wide confirmation of ridership, examination of secondary non-transported distances, reviewing all school start times, tablet technology for safety, routes, reporting, apps, and students' ability to check in and out. The Office of Transportation will communicate our plans through the methods listed on this slide. We will share information with all of Team BCPS, first from the system, then through the related offices, followed by schools, to ensure that all stakeholders remain informed. The Office of Transportation is committed to meeting the needs of our students and finding creative ways to address bus driver shortages and related service issues while improving our communication and efficiency. We will continue to update the board, our community, and Team BCPS throughout this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. That was excellent.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So, we've had, have watched Transportation give a number of presentations to this board since I've been on the board and before, and the one thing that I always see as being an obstacle is that when parents or school office personnel attempt to call Transportation because there's a problem with something, oftentimes, during busy times, no one will answer the phone. And the reason that we've been given is because the people who would ordinarily answer the phones have been conscripted to drive buses, which then leaves no one to answer the phones. Does this plan put people in place to answer the phones?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question I had is that, are we doing anything to ensure that the child who's eligible to ride the bus is getting on the correct bus? Because one thing that happens in my neighborhood is, we'll have sometimes a couple different buses come through the neighborhood, it's a large neighborhood, and children will arbitrarily decide that morning, oh, you know what? I'm going to walk four blocks over that way. It's a bus, it goes to the same school, but it's a different bus. And so then now that bus is overcrowded, and the first bus that a bunch of kids decided not to get on is under capacity for that day, and it messes up all the numbers. So do we have a way to determine that, can the drivers, is there any method to confirm that the children who are on the bus are the children who are supposed to be on the bus?
So thank you for sharing that. That is something that we've talked about with principals. Most recently, we met with principals regarding these adjustments, and they brought up that very issue. And so we are in the steps of problem-solving around how we can use IDs. Until we get to that long-range plan where everything is technical and the student swipes into the bus with that card, and so as a parent, you're able to see where they swiped in and where they got off. Also, on the tablets, previewing in the future, a bus driver will see, this is not where a student's supposed to get off, which will be very helpful for an elementary school. Until we get to that point, we're working on an interim solution to prevent just what you spoke about.
Okay, so, but there is, so eventually, we're going to use ID cards?
Yes, specifically related to the tablet. So that's part of the technology piece that we're working on, using the tablets and ID cards for the students and, you know, the app that students, families will have access to, so you can see, you know, your bus is coming on time, so the alarm went off, you should get up and start moving. Or you have 10 extra grace minutes where you can hit the snooze button, and parents are also able to plan. So that, that will be part of the bigger plan in terms of...
I think this is the best transportation report I've ever heard.
Thank you.
Dr. Hager?
Did you have a...
Ms. McMillian, I was before.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Joes?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, and this is related to transportation. You said we have two-way radios but no cameras, is that correct?
So we do have cameras, Ms. Joes. Thank you for that question. We do not have the most updated cameras. Right now, there's an entire process that the Office of Transportation has to follow. When we need to pull back the camera, we have to actually go and get the memory from the bus, download it, then send it to a school. As we continue to move forward with upgrading technology, we'll have the ability to go in remotely to identify any footage that we have. But right now, we do have cameras on our buses, just not the most efficient camera system.
Got you. And do we have school crossing guards that are not county police? The board recently received a letter from Police Chief Hyatt regarding the shortage of school crossing guards, and this board's refusal to sign a contract with the county police department, and the revenue that they were expecting that had been used for funding school crossing guards is now not available. This is an issue of children's safety and public safety if officers are also pulled away to manage school crossings. So to that end, Chair McMillian, I'm going to request that you schedule a virtual meeting this month as requested by the police chief, so we can work towards a solution, as she has requested.
I heard you, Ms. Joes.
Thank you.
I'll talk to whoever I need to talk to to discuss that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. If you could schedule that this month, that would be great. Thanks.
Dr. Hager?
Thank you. Also, when I first found out about this whole plan, I was so excited, and you guys have put so much work into it, and it's really very thorough, and I respect that as a parent of bus riders. And so, two parts I'm a little bit concerned about, and you probably know where I'm going, and it has to do with early school start times. So we have some really early school start times in our county already. Anna Rundle and Howard County are both going to start times that meet the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations, which is eight, no later, sorry, no earlier than 8:30 for middle or high schools. And clearly, we know all the health and learning and safety implications that go along with that. So two pieces of the plan include extending the drop-off to 30 minutes earlier, before school start, school start for middle and high school, and then examining school start times, but there is an explicit language around ensuring that it's not too early. So those are the two pieces I want to talk about.
Thank you for raising both of those. So the extension of the school window really talks about the bus driver's ability to disembark the students as soon as they get there. So typical, basically, all of the middle schools and high schools, the time that you're used to seeing now, unless, you know, you made some drastic change, for example, you're relocated to a new building, you should expect to see the same time. This change allows for safety assistance to come and meet the students at the bus, and then for them to be supervised in a designated location. It does not require high school students and elementary school students to wake up 30 minutes earlier and start their days 30 minutes earlier. So I'm glad you brought that up, so we can clarify. So I'm glad you brought that up, so we can clarify that for all members of Team BCPS. Additionally, there are potential efficiencies with routing by looking at all school start times, but 100% tied to that, and we've looked at the work of Frismatic and the other company escapes me, which Anna Rundle and Howard County use, is around healthy start times. So any work that we are doing, we are 100% committing to the entire student. And as we are looking at social and emotional wellness for students, we are also incorporating those guidelines for the American Association of Pediatrics, so.
Honestly, I was debating on making a motion about it, but it sounds like, I feel pretty confident that you guys are moving in that direction, and just, again, the evidence is unequivocal for the older kids. They really shouldn't be starting school earlier than 8:30. So, thank you.
So if I just may add, and I know Dr. Hager, you and I have talked about that, and really doing the research and study. So it's not only the start time, it's the end time and the implications with things that happen at the end of the day. And so, I don't know if I'm going to say fortunately, unfortunately, I had that experience in my other life, and it does take some time, because we have to look at the student's day completely. And so, when we talked, we talked to Transportation, we want to look at that as well, because it's not just in the beginning, or the early start, or the later start, it's also what happens at the end of the day. So I'm just saying, it's, we have to look at the full gamut when we start looking at bell times. So I thank you for that, for raising that.
And just to follow up, the two things people bring up are babysitting and sports. And so those, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but those are issues that other counties and states, I mean, all of California and other states that have addressed this, have figured out ways to.
Well, as the third-largest school system, we have other things that we have to deal with, like we just reported on Transportation and the shortages, and trying to have the real technology so we can do and provide that. I'm just saying that when we look at the start time, we have to look at the entire day of the student, and then what happens afterwards. So, so we hear you loud and clear, and we did ask, did ask Dr. Yarborough to include that in the work that we're doing with Transportation. And when she provided the considerations throughout the presentation, so we'll be providing some updates.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hassan.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Yarborough, for that presentation. It was outstanding, so thank you. I do want to talk a little bit about, you know, bus safety, which is something, you know, that I can personally attest to. I've seen it. I know we've all definitely experienced it, heard about it, all of the above. So in talking about, I guess, you know, school bus cameras, right, we talked about that very briefly, and we talked about how we can go into school bus camera footage remotely, or, you know, grab it when we need it. Is there any consideration for having, you know, when we have resources available, having an addition, an additional staff member monitoring some of that footage? I know, like, a lot of really negative incidents have happened on school buses, and I feel like if we had either an additional school safety assistant, or these school safety assistant on a bus, for instance, should an incident occur, or just, you know, watching these buses and monitoring them, and making sure students know that they are being monitored, so that, you know, consequences do happen, and, you know, just having that accountability. So is that something that, I guess, we're considering, something that can be added if not?
So let me speak to the safety on buses. So safety on buses is something that has been shared with us loud and clear, from bus drivers' attendance, as well as, you know, from families and from speaking directly with students. One of the things that bus drivers were loud and clear about is the majority of them do this job because they love students. But they also have explained that some of the behaviors that occur on the buses are unsafe. And the way that they were reporting the infractions was triple kit, paper copy, sometimes you remember to drop it off, sometimes you drop it off and it doesn't get to the intended person. So our job is to remove the barrier there. And they also were reporting that sometimes they didn't know the disposition. So the student arrives on the bus in the afternoon, they're not sure what to do. And so we're, we're addressing that in two ways. Number one is to automate the system, the same way that all of our teachers and staff have access to Focus, so that they can real-time report an infraction, and it automatically goes to the appropriate people. That's what we're doing for bus infractions. But we're also being very clear about what behaviors are acceptable and what behaviors are not acceptable on buses. And if you do violate the behaviors, what are the possible ranges of consequences? Because we want all students to feel safe, we want all drivers in attendance to feel respected, and we want to start by communicating this broadly to Team BCPS. So what we did was we brought together a group, in addition to the feedback from the actual members of the Office of Transportation, we brought together principals, we brought together teachers, we brought together our unions to review, as well as our staff members from social, emotional learning, to review what that matrix would look like, as well as what the consequences were. We are in the final stages of that, where next week, at our first annual conference for principals, we're going to review it together to level set. The first communication will come out widely across Team BCPS centrally, so that we inform all of our families, we're on the same page, about our expectations for safety. So we think that's the first piece. We're also going to follow up from the direct offices and then schools during that first week, in addition to having it posted on the website. Whether they do town halls, they go into English classes, they do grade-level meetings, they're going to also have an opportunity to reinforce that message for students. So it's our hope, by the first week of schools, students and families will have had an opportunity to discuss it. We'll also use a variety of other communication tools to share it widely, to be proactive about our expectations. But in the event that a behavior occurs that shouldn't, we will respond quickly, because now drivers have the ability, number one, to use the two-way radio that's functional in all 11 zones. We've been testing it out all spring, and we're very excited about that, to call it into the school. And typically, as a former principal, if someone called in something to the school, you had an assistant principal waiting for the bus to arrive, so you could address it right there and then. If necessary, we'll then, you know, move to downloading the equipment. In terms of having an additional staff member in the budget, to that, I defer to our superintendent of schools.
Well, I will say, we were very instrumental in getting additional FTEs for this coming budget, and specifically, the safety assistance were around what was happening inside the building. I think as we look to see the success of the new technology and resources, it's something for us to reexamine. And again, come December, excuse me, January, I will present a proposed budget to the board for reactions, and if that's something you're interested in, we'll be happy to have a conversation.
Dr. Yarborough, I just want to say that you're aware that I have an act of CDL. I attended the BCPS bus driver training last Friday afternoon. They talked about the new referral process, where when a bus driver writes up the referral, they take it into the main office, they leave a copy with the main office, they have their copy, they now take it back to the LOT office, they make a copy, so that the LOT office has a copy, the driver has a copy, and the school has a copy. So they're going to try to keep, and as you're aware, they're going to keep track of those. So I was impressed by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you very, Ms. Causey.
Good evening, and thank you for that comprehensive and very clear report. Definitely an important issue that the whole community, BCPS community, system-wide, has discussed. In the efforts for continuous improvement that Dr. Williams spoke to earlier, prior, several years ago, when I was on the board, it was explained the prior metric goal for on-time arrival was 94%, I want to say, in that range. And it does not seem coincidence that it does align with also our attendance, expectations for children, and what we know supports academic achievement. So are the, in order to track our improvement, it's good to have a baseline. Public Works has spoken to that. So are the metrics, excuse me, are the records available yet from the ransomware attack? Office of Transportation had indicated that they were not currently available due to the ransomware attack. So are past metrics available now?
That's something I would have to follow up on for you.
Okay, thank you. And the number 77,000, is that the actual ridership, or is it the number of eligible riders?
77,000 is the number of students that we transported this year.
Okay, thank you. And then the slide that had additional considerations, including extending the walking distance, what considerations are going to be given to the many neighborhoods and communities throughout Baltimore County? But I know, in my district, 200 square miles of the Haverd Zone has very few sidewalks and a lot of challenges. So how is that going to be evaluated for safety concerns?
So thank you for raising that. Currently, even within our one-mile walk radius, if a student or a family lives in a place that is deemed unsafe, meaning no sidewalks, you have to cross a major highway, we still provide a bus to that location. And so in order to move forward with that process, it would also require partnership with the police department, where we would go out and survey each area where we were proposing that we would, you know, move it to a non-transported zone. And so it's a very detailed process that is very transparent, and it puts safety first for students. You know, as our current, you know, very small, non-transported zone, we still transport students who live half a mile, quarter of a mile away because of the location of their home. So thank you for raising that.
Okay, and I just want to definitely support Dr. Hager's comments about the later start times, especially, again, in many districts, not just my own. Students have considerable travel time, and especially in the early morning part. Is staff aware, and Dr. Williams, of the BCPS organizational effectiveness report on later start times?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hager?
Just a quick comment about sidewalks. I know there was a bill a few years ago that would require the, I believe it was the county, to ensure that there were sidewalks around schools. So just, you know, could that be a partnership with the county to kind of ensure that, moving forward and looking backwards, there are, these sidewalks just exist? Is this something we've also talked about at all?
So we have current monthly meetings with the county government, so it's certainly something that we can put on the radar, just to see what our current status is and what next steps would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Yarborough. The next item on the agenda is a report on board policies. This is the first reader for these policies, and for that, I call on the Policy Review Committee Chair, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you. Members of the Board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the Board accept this report of the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies. Board Policy 1270, Community Relations, Community Involvement, Parent and Family Engagement. Board Policy 3215, Purchasing, Contract Execution. Board Policy 3230, Purchasing, Qualification of Vendors. Board Policy 3231, Purchasing, Vendor Performance Evaluation. Board Policy 3540, Physical Plant Services, Energy Conservation and Sustainability. Board Policy 4103, Personnel, Child Abuse and Neglect. Board Policy 5470, Services to Students Wellness. Board Policy 5562, Conduct, Student Registered Sex Offender, Learning Options Off of School Property. Board Policy 7250, Designing, School Building Design. These policies are presented to you at tonight's agenda as Exhibit L.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the recommendations of the Board's Policy Review Committee for board policies 1270, 3215, 3230, 3231, 3540, 4103, 5470, 5462, and 7250?
So moved, Hager.
Thank you. No second is needed, since the recommendation comes from the committee. Are there any discussion? No discussion? May I have a roll-call vote, Mrs. Stifler?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Derosky?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Favorite team.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that, I call on Ms. Joz, Chairman of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Thank you, Mr. McMillian. Good evening, members of the Board. The Board's Building and Contracts Committee met on Monday, July 11, 2022. Items M1 through M16 are being forwarded to the full Board for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve items M1 through M16?
So moved, Hassan.
Excuse me?
So moved, Hassan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No second is needed, since the recommendation comes from the committee. Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote? Excuse me?
Mr. McMillian, I do have a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is either from Ms. Shea or Dr. McComas. The first contract, the ELE pilot program, this is coming forth because the Board did not approve the full ELE contract, correct?
Good evening. Yes, Ms. Joz, that is correct. As we discussed at our last board meeting, we've brought forward a modified contract to support an extended pilot.
And this pilot runs for the entire school year, correct? My question is, since this Board didn't want to discuss it, I'm going to mention it out there. We'd got a letter from the state superintendent, and also from the county executive who's withheld $10 million of the BAT request due to the Board's failure to adopt the new proposed ELE. So I'm going to put that question back forth to, how do we make sure that we don't lose any of the Maryland LEEDs program funding? Will that, will this pilot program help us to not lose that $4 million of the award that's tied to the science of reading requirements?
So first, I'd like to clarify that the pilot does not need to run the entire year. Typically, our pilots last a quarter to a semester. We would like to bring this back after first quarter to expand it at that point. Ms. Shea, if you have anything to add?
Just that, to your other question about the LEEDs funding, we know that the $4 million for science of reading is conditioned upon us adopting an ELE curriculum. To Dr. McComas's point, our hope would be to come back at the end of first quarter to be able to implement the curriculum. If we were not able to do that, then that would be a question for the state, because our understanding is that that funding is contingent upon replacing the curriculum.
So, so let's just be real clear. The state has written to us and said, in order to get the grant, and I'm looking at Dr. Bosma McComas, because she's being very professional tonight, so thank you, Dr. Mc.
I'm trying to be good for you, Dr. Williams.
Yes, thank you. Real clear. The grant is tied to a standard-based curriculum. So the state superintendent has written to us to say, you have to show the standard, the new curriculum in order for us to get the millions of dollars around the teaching of science of reading, right?
Yes, sir.
So, that's, that's where we are as a school system. We received a letter from Mr. Shoudery explaining it, and explaining how it's tied to the grant. And so right now, we are, the modified contract is the continuation of the pilot.
Thank you, Dr. McComas, and Dr. Williams, and Ms. Shea.
Okay, Dr. Hager was next.
I just had a comment. I wanted to thank you for bringing this to us. This is exactly what we had discussed last meeting. I truly believe that, you know, building a plane while flying it is not the right way to go, and I know we didn't have a lot of time to do the pilot last school year, and so, you know, being able to kind of reset at the start of the school year and really evaluate the best way to implement this really important core curriculum is, I think, clearly such a smart way to go about this, and we'll still have the time to then adopt the full curriculum, assuming it is able to be implemented to our standards, as I am sure that's what we anticipate. I just, I want to, I want to thank you for doing this this way and bringing this to us, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Rowe, Ms. Causey, had their hands up at the same time. Whoever wants to go first?
So forgive me if this question was asked in Contracts Committee yesterday. I, the video wasn't uploaded today when I went to look for the committee meeting. But, so this is the My View Literacy program?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to, was Cromwell Valley one of the pilot schools for that?
I can double-check my list.
The only reason I ask is because my daughter came home- The only reason I ask is because my daughter came home with a stack of My View Literacy books that she'd been working through.
We'll confirm.
I just wanted to make sure if I was looking through that, that I was looking at the curriculum that you're proposing because I wasn't at the last one.
So people asked the staff to find that, but just a reminder to the Board, we provided that update of schools that will continue in one of our updates. But we'll look.
I'm still catching up on the month of email.
It is.
It is.
It is.
It was, okay.
Cromwell Valley is.
So that book, that's part of this, that's part of what, okay.
Some of the materials.
I think it's good to expand the pilot, so thank you.
Ms. Causey?
Thank you, Mr. McMillian. And thank you for bringing forward this extension of the pilot. It had been asked previously if there, what other districts in Maryland are utilizing MSD approved ELE curriculum and what is that and what are the results that those districts are seeing?
So I believe the question was actually if other districts are using Wonders, how are they able to get the LEEDs grant funding? So the data that we reached out to other districts to ask those districts that had currently or previously been using Wonders to find out what they were doing. And all of them are moving. So Talbot County is using the LEEDs grant funding to replace their curriculum. Somerset was using Wonders 2015 and piloted the Wonders 2023 and decided to move forward with a different program. Kent County is using Wonders but the 2020 version. Ours is the 2014. That is not aligned. Queen Anne's County is currently piloting Wonders 2023 as well as My View Literacy and Into Reading to replace the Wonders 2014. And Carroll County is currently using Wonders 2017, which is a more current version than we have, and they have put out an RFP to replace something to align to the Science of Reading as required by COOMAR. MSD does not currently have a list of every LEA that they could provide to us readily of what districts are using. Ms. Kraft reached out to her colleagues, and then we specifically asked the question about Wonders because that was the question that was sent to us from the Board.
Okay, thank you. Yep. I believe I had to ask a more general question around school districts that are currently using an MSD approved ELE curriculum in order to understand what's happening in the state of Maryland with other districts, especially those that are seeing high achievement.
Right, so as I mentioned, Ms. Kraft asked MSD if they had a current list of all the programs being used in all the LEAs, and they were not able to furnish that for us. What I can tell you is that the expectation beginning in 2020 is the same for every LEA, that they have to either certify with one of these third-party vendors, that they have a curriculum aligned to the evidence-based standards, or they have to produce evidence that they already have it in place. The other piece is that the grant funding, remember, not every LEA may have applied for the Science of Reading as the strategy specific to it, which is when this contingency comes in place. So I don't have the information about what other LEAs applied for, for the Maryland LEEDs grant.
And is there any other approved contract related to the Science of Reading that we could expand to qualify for this funding in terms, we've heard a lot about professional development?
No, so that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you want to answer? I apologize.
No, well, thank you, thank you, Ms. Causey. What's really fundamental here to understand is this is the core curriculum. Other things that we have in place relate to the Science of Reading, like letters, for example, are not, that's not the core curriculum. Letters is professional learning for our teachers. And then Ms. Shea, I'm sure you can elaborate on that better than I could.
Thank you, I apologize.
It's okay.
So the Science of Reading specifically has three contingencies. That is, training for teachers and professional learning based on the Science of Reading, a screening system as aligned to the Ready to Read Act, and as Dr. McComas said, a core language arts curriculum. So that third piece of the contingency is what this contract fulfills, and without it, we don't, and you have to meet all three of the strategies in the Science of Reading. The funding that we asked for in the Maryland LEEDs was for the training, for the letters and the ordnance gillingham. And that's the training. Funding is in jeopardy because we didn't meet that third contingency with this contract.
Okay, thank you. Because I read the state superintendent's letter, and it seemed very broad and not detailed. So you're saying we do comply with the two of the three, and this is the third?
Right. I'm not sure what you mean by broad because the specifics are that it has to be those three, the training, the screening, and the core curriculum. We have a screening program, so that one, we're in good shape. We've had doubles. We actually were ahead of the state in meeting the expectations of the Ready to Read. The training is ongoing, and we actually have requested the funds in the LEEDs grant to continue the training. So actually, without the core, which is the third one, now Strategy A and C are in jeopardy because we don't have the core and we won't get the funding for the ongoing training.
So just to correct a statement, the question that came from this Board was about not moving forward with the full implementation, the full contract. Would that impact the Maryland LEED grant? And that's the response, it was very clear to me, that was the response from the state superintendent. So he helped answer our question. Thank you to this team for probably, and Ms. Kraft, that you probably were contacting MSD on a regular basis to get that response. So I think additional information or updates about the Science of Reading, anything about curriculum, I think we can also look at our curriculum committee as some updates, Dr. Boswell McComas.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Ms. Joes, your follow-up question?
Yes, my follow-up is for Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams, the $10 million that's being withheld in the BAT because we did not approve the full ELE curriculum, how, are you going to be addressing that letter or is that the Board's responsibility? Since we did not approve the curriculum, and unfortunately, the core mission for the Board is approving curriculum and budget, and those two intersect, the BAT appropriation and curriculum, but our Board members did not want to discuss that. So my question is, will you be addressing that letter and how we address that? How do we address that?
Is it the letter from the state superintendent, Ms. Joes?
From the state superintendent and from the county executive.
I think we do need to respond, and I will work with the Board leadership to have a response to the county executive and the state, and our state superintendent, if necessary for. I think our state superintendent was just a matter of fact. He was responding to our question. Your question is about the letter from our county executive about the budget appropriation transfer. We'll be happy to follow up with the full Board about next steps with that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams.
Okay, Mrs. Stifler, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Rather than go through separating them, I'll just abstain from the whole group of them.
Ms. Stoloski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Rofferman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Favor, 9.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the 2022-2023 collective bargaining unit master agreements. And for that, I call on Ms. Charlie Green and Mr. Duke.
Good evening, Vice Chair McMillian, Dr. Williams, members of the Board of Education. I'm here before you tonight with both Mr. Duke and Mr. Hartlove to share with you updates on collective bargaining agreements. Specifically, we will share agreed-upon changes to master agreements. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Duke.
Good evening, Vice Chair McMillian, Dr. Williams, and members of the Board. I have concluded negotiations with each of our bargaining units, and therefore, I am coming before the Board this evening to ask for its approval of the negotiated changes to the master agreements before the Board and each of our collective bargaining units.
May I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining unit agreements for ASME, BCPS, OPE, CASE, ESP, BC, and TABCO?
So moved, Ms. Causey.
Second off.
We have our first and our second. Any discussion? I don't see any on the chat. No discussion? No, excuse me, Ms. Causey?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all of the staff, Dr. Williams and the board member, on, Board members, on working through this. I also want to thank the leadership of our bargaining units for working through all of this, through this extended timeframe with these extended efforts. I believe that this will really improve our recruitment and retention efforts, and it will, as was pointed out by a public speaker earlier, it will convey the value that this Board holds for all of those employees that touch the lives of students directly or support the people that touch the lives of the children directly. So I just appreciate all of the work that has gone into this.
Thank you. Ms. Hassan, did you have your hand up? No. And Ms. Joes, no comment?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you were typing something. Ms. Stifler, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Stoloski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Rofferman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Favor, 9.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, consideration of board policies. And for that, I call on the Policy Review Committee Chair, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you. Members of the Board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the Board accept the committee's recommendation to amend Board Policy 8230, orientation of new Board members. This recommendation is presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibit O.
Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Board's Policy Review Committee?
So moved, Hassan.
Is there a second? No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stifler, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Stoloski?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Rofferman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Favor, 9.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is report on suspensions, climate, and culture. And for that, I call on Dr. Williams, Dr. Yarborough, Dr. Zarchin, and Ms. Lewis.
So good evening again, Board members. This presentation was prepared for our May 17 Board meeting. It was eventually rescheduled twice, I believe, so please bear with us tonight. I've invited Dr. Yarborough, our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Zarchin, our Chief of Schools, and Ms. April Lewis, our Executive Director of School Safety, to join me in presenting an update on suspensions, climate, culture, to include our data and specific actions that we're taking to respond to the needs of our school communities. Next slide, please. So the compass, our pathway to excellence, identifies five focus areas of our work. A coordinated response that addresses all aspects of school climate will create the conditions for the remaining focus areas to be adequately addressed. Our priorities are learning, accountability, results, safe and supportive environment, high-performing workforce and alignment of human capital, community engagement and partnerships, and operational excellence. Next slide. Key findings, excuse me, according to the Mindset Scholars Network at Stanford University, the four dimensions of school climate which impact safe and supportive environments include leadership, expectation, collaboration, and safety. Key findings of this study were teacher turnover and student achievement gains were associated with unique dimensions of school climate. Students in schools where the school climate was improving increased their academic achievement gains, and the school safety dimension of school climate had the strongest relationship with student achievement. Safe and supportive environments have been a focus for us throughout this year. Initially, we began with enhanced COVID-19 mitigation strategies to protect and preserve the return to in-person learning. It was vital to keep our doors open and avoid additional learning interruptions. Quarter one, in the fall, schools focused on implementing SCL signature practices to build community and welcome students back to school. This was an adjustment after nearly two years of virtual and hybrid learning. Quarter two, like many other school systems, Baltimore County Public Schools experienced a prolonged uptick in disruptive behaviors that did not lessen. It was imperative that we engage the community in dialogue around our student needs. For this reason, we reaffirm our commitment to student safety and hosted a system-wide, three-zoned town hall meetings to engage with families. We also worked with PTSA leadership to provide them with tools and resources to lead conversations and support local families. We also partnered with student councils, junior councils, for student-led safety campaigns to raise awareness about mental health and tools from the Maryland Center for School Safety. Quarter three, we conducted safety walks on school campuses and deployed additional central office supports to schools. We also increased collaboration with partners and gathered principal feedback and input on school needs while planning a pilot program. This past quarter, fourth quarter, we piloted Safety Assistance in 20 secondary schools, reimagined alternative schools for this upcoming school year to increase access and review implementation of the Code of Conduct for consistency. So at this time, I invite our Chief of Schools, Dr. Mike Zarchin, to review data related to suspensions.
Good evening. While suspensions do not provide the complete picture of a school's environment, they do provide a window into specific student behaviors which may impact a positive school environment. Suspensions provide a temporary separation from the school environment in order to protect teaching and learning. The Code of Conduct outlines specific behaviors that may lead to suspensions. Principals have full authority to implement the Code of Conduct based on circumstances in their schools related to disciplinary infractions. As this chart shows, what we knew, what we sensed, has borne out in the data. Suspensions have increased every marking period. That's up to third marking period. As behaviors have increased, so have the percentage of suspensions. The third marking period suspension rate for BCPS increased to 2.83% from 2.23% during marking period two. All grade spans' suspension rates increased, with the highest rate increase in middle school at 5.9% for third marking period. That was followed by high schools at 3.7%. System-wide, next slide, please. System-wide, the next, the suspension rate for all students in marking period three was 2.83%. The charts show student suspension rates by grade level for marking periods one, two, and three of the current school year. As displayed, students in kindergarten through grade two have a very low suspension rate. The suspension rate gradually increases as students transition from grades three to five. The transition year between elementary and middle school represents the greatest increase in suspension rate, increasing by almost 4.5% by the end of grade six. This increased rate of suspension continues through middle school and grade nine before gradually decreasing from grades 10 to 12. Next slide, please. For marking period three, the elementary and high school suspension rate was comparable to marking period three of the 2018-2019 school year. In contrast, middle schools have increased suspension rate in comparison to pre-pandemic rates by approximately 1.5%. Trends in suspension rates show that the transition years from middle school through grade nine have the highest rate of student suspension. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. April Lewis, Executive Director of School Safety, to discuss Student Safety Assistance.
Thank you, and good evening. The National
The National Association for Secondary School Principals and National Association for Elementary School Principals provide a framework for safe and successful schools. Best practices for creating safe and successful schools include cohesive, multidisciplinary collaboration, multi-tiered systems of support and access to mental health supports, crisis prevention, preparedness and recovery, and ongoing positive school discipline and climate efforts. A review of data, practices, and procedures revealed a need to enhance cohesive, multidisciplinary collaboration, and ongoing positive school discipline and climate efforts in direct response to current student needs. The remaining slides provide additional information regarding our safety plans for Team BCPS, with specific actions and a timeline for implementation. Next slide, please. As shared in December, the FY '23 Budget Priorities Principal Survey identified safety assistance as the third most frequently requested support for the upcoming year. Additionally, best practices and national models support the use of safety and security assistance in schools in addition to SROs. BCPS began the pilot of contracted secondary school safety assistance in 20 schools during the week of April 20th with the goal of full implementation in all secondary schools this fall. These grant-funded positions will be equitably allocated based on enrollment, receive summer professional development in August to include Team BCPS expectations, school expectations, participation in 70 hours of training provided by the Maryland Center for School Safety, and focus on maintaining a safe and supportive environment through a proactive presence while responding to emergent needs. These positions are not replacing SROs but will support school teams in partnership with the Office of School Safety and School Administration. Next slide, please. In preparation for a full fall launch, we responded to immediate needs by piloting this effort in 20 secondary schools with our existing Board of Education-approved contracted vendors. The goal was to work with school teams to create the climate and conditions necessary for success. Our student safety assistants collaborated with school administration and safety managers to provide a visible, supportive, and responsive presence in school buildings. School teams provided a daily schedule that included ongoing communication and was tailored to school needs. In this way, we have collected data on this effort through the pilot and informed plans for the fall. Pilot school principals provided feedback in May.
Baltimore County Public Schools uses a comprehensive, multilayered approach to ensure the safety of all students and staff. Our strategies include training and drills for staff and students, building a strong collaboration with the Baltimore County Police Department, investing in enhanced building security systems, and more. Building strong relationships plays a significant role in this effort to keep students and staff safe. BCPS is making additional investments in this critical area through the placement of new safety assistants in secondary schools. These safety assistants will focus on de-escalation strategies, relationship building, and provide additional adult presence in buildings. They work to support school resource officers and school administrative teams.
We had our safety assistant officer, Turpin, for about four to five weeks now. And I can say it brings a sense of calm, a sense of security. Officer Turpin builds positive relationships with students, parents, teachers, and he's allowed to navigate throughout our school and also the community.
My role is like the main priority is make sure the students and staff are safe. I want them to know that I'm always there and that it's my main priority for safety and everything. They have absolutely nothing to worry about. I want them to feel protected.
Safety assistants were piloted in 20 BCPS secondary schools in spring 2022.
When we think about student safety, we really have to think about many components of student safety. One of the biggest pieces of that is making sure that students come to a school where they feel safe and supported, and they feel like an active part of the school community. The safety assistant role, I think, is going to be critical, helping our young men and women connect with additional adults in the building, see them in the hallways, see them in the passing time, and should really help ensure a safe environment for everyone.
Being a part of the community as a student, it was exciting, you know, a lot of people around trying to help, especially at Perry Hall. Now that I'm older now and a part of the community and I can give back to the students, they could be their self with me. They could ask me anything, and I'm willing to listen and help them out in any aspect. So just the presence and them seeing me, like not even during school hours, they may see me in the community. I live five minutes away from the school, and I always see the students out. Couple of them live in the neighborhood. So it's a great thing just to be able to communicate and talk to the kids on a school basis and also out of school. Kids are going to be kids, but if they have someone that they could lean on and basically tell them everything's going to be okay, you can do this, you can do that, but in a respectful manner, and I think everything will be fine.
In the fall, all secondary schools will have full-time safety assistants as part of their staff. While education is essential, providing safe and welcoming schools for BCPS students and staff safety remains our priority.
Thank you. At this time, I turn the presentation over to Dr. Yarborough, Deputy Superintendent, to discuss our partnership efforts and the components of our comprehensive safety plan for the fall.
Thank you, and good evening again. As you all know, BCPS is open. In March, we shared that our schools were open to volunteers and community partners. To date, we have identified more than 717 partners, and we're still growing. We appreciate and are looking forward to your help in creating an additional positive adult presence in schools. It makes a difference to our students to see parents, community organizations, and business leaders invested in their success. Consider, we asked our community members to consider volunteering before school, during lunch, and during dismissal, which are our peak times. The Office of Family and Community Engagement, along with school leaders, will be working to increase the visibility of tools and resources to enhance existing partnerships and build new ones. Community partnerships, as you know, help to strengthen and transform the learning experience for our students. We have an upcoming partnership on July 27, 2022, at Mays Chapel Elementary School, and we're looking for great opportunities to partner with our broader community. Next slide, please. On February 2, during the Principal Leadership Development Meeting, Dr. Williams reiterated his support of school principals and his confidence in their ability to respond appropriately to safety issues that arise. He affirmed the flexibility that school leaders have. Specifically, he said, while we continue to nurture and support, we also must hold students accountable in accordance with the BCPS Code of Conduct. Disruptive behaviors that detract from the learning environment are not acceptable in Baltimore County Public Schools. He went on to address the claims that school leader hands are tied and stated, while it is true that we must abide by state and federal guidelines, there is flexibility within those guidelines. School administrators' hands are not tied. We're sharing this message with the entire Team BCPS community to make sure that everyone understands our commitment to providing a physically and socially emotional safe environment for students and staff. To that end, we must work together to minimize and address disruptions. Our safety and plan enhancements for the fall include more school counselors and social workers, revamped procedures to effectively communicate outcomes related to bullying and harassment, and a widespread information campaign to promote the use of the Maryland Center for School Safety reporting tip line. Additionally, we have recently completed the process of reimagining expanded, alternative educational options and increasing access for students in need of wraparound services for the upcoming school year. In August, we will also provide staff refresher training and de-escalation strategies during pre-service week. We will foster increased understanding of the Code of Conduct, beginning next week with all of our principals at our conference, and develop greater consistency in the application of guidelines across schools. Ensure that all school disciplinary plans are shared with the community, and as stated earlier, implement revised bus infraction reporting processes to ensure timely responses. Our opportunities for expanded self-regulation support and strategies for students in the fall will continue while increasing additional opportunities to connect and create a sense of belonging through orientation, advisories, mentorships, and transition programs this summer. All of these actions are a part of our ongoing work. We will continue to review and evaluate current status and the progress of our efforts as we respond to the needs of Team BCPS. We will keep the board, our community, and Team BCPS updated during these changing times. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, Ms. Rowe.
I have my hand raised also, it's Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
This looks very good. And this, in addition to things I'm hearing in the community about coordinating community schools with YMCA and other organizations, I think that we're going to probably see improvements in our schools, and I'm glad to see that everyone is taking these steps.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to, number one, this was a great, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but I-
Are you checking, okay, great. Just wanted to make sure you can hear me. My question is that, this is number one, I thought this was a very well-done presentation, so thank you so much for this. And I wanted to actually follow up and add on to, we had a presentation at the Equity Committee meeting on April 21 about suspension rates and disparity in suspensions. And I wanted to know if the panel could speak a little bit to that. I actually have the slide up from the Equity Committee meeting where it says in 2019 to 2020, there was a suspension gap analysis, and it said that black males were suspended at rates higher than their peers. And so I didn't hear any talk of that in the presentation, but given that that is something that you all are aware of and that you all have actually have numbers behind, I'm reading from, it was 2019 to 2020, what sort of, sort of things are you putting in place to address those, address that issue?
Thank you for raising that question. So I think the first response is directly tied to our Equity Policy 0100. We have spent this year conducting a reboot and a revamp of what equity and action looks like. At the forefront of our actions, of our conversations, and how we interact as leaders in a school, we expect that we are being equitable in our decisions. Tonight, what you really heard about is how are we responding to the pervasive issues that were brought about as a result of the pandemic. Listening to the feedback of staff, students, and families, it required us to take a deeper look at our practices, identify where perhaps because of the gap in time due to the pandemic, we needed to level set and ensure consistency. This does not mean that we are not going to make sure that all of our policies are implemented with fidelity and equitably. This morning, for example, we had our SPP session with more than 500 administrators, and what we really talked about was equity in action. We talked about our policies, we talked about how we make decisions, and we talked about how we move forward as leaders and create safe spaces for all students. So I thank you for raising the 2019-2020 school data. One of the things we talked about this morning is as schools create climate goals as a part of their SPP plan, that they use their Stakehold Day survey. Dr. Williams encouraged everyone to bring students and staff voices to the table at the onset. And so you have an opportunity right there to look at your data, to see what the past practices were, to identify specifically, looking at suspension, what that means for all of your students, disaggregated by gender and student group as well. And so we are imploring our schools to make decisions with the support of central office that make sure that we are moving our goals of equity forward. So the equity data that you spoke to informs how we move forward. But this plan is about how we work together to make sure that safe and supportive environments are a priority in all of our schools, but we are still moving forward with ensuring equity for all.
Okay, thank you very much for that, because I just wanted to, I understand that, you know, this is a broader picture, looking at everything, but if there is an issue that's disproportionately affecting a certain segment of the student body population, as it looks like this is, I wanted to make sure that that wasn't something that was being overlooked, but that we were applying the appropriate amount of attention since those numbers were, since it looks like black males were suspended at a higher rate than their peers. But thank you for that.
Dr. Hager.
Yeah, I want to echo, it was another great presentation. So we've had two tonight really showing all the great work that's happening, and Dr. Williams, definitely a huge shout out to all this work with these two very different topics that we talked about tonight. I have two very different questions. One is about any efforts we're undertaking to address social media that may be supporting some of the safety issues in our schools. So I know there was a big issue across, I think, across the country with destructive behaviors in bathrooms stemming from, from some social media attention to that. I know a lot of the fights that happen in schools are then recorded and shared and promoted. And so is there anything specifically we're doing on that front with respect to social media?
Well, I'll ask Ms. Lewis to respond, but I would remind the board, this past year, we had the general town hall, and we had our SRO to talk about some of these things that we were seeing. And then we went into the three zones, and social media is, is, is a problem. It is a problem. And it's not just our students, it's the adults as well. So, but I don't know, we have talked about that, we have talked with our partners, what can we do? And in some regards, and I think the sergeant said to the parents, you got to monitor your kids' social media, knowing, you know, what they're doing. But I'll just let Ms. Lewis to add some.
And thank you. And I think a big part of that is awareness, for parents to be aware of what their children are doing on social media. Social media was one of the topics that we shared with our principals during the Safe Schools Conference. It was a topic at the Maryland Center for School Safety Conference today, and as a matter of fact, it was led by a student from Hereford High School this morning. And so involving our students in efforts around social media so that they know more than we know. The student was sharing some of the lingo that I don't know, but becoming aware, even as parents, you see, you know, these words or these acronyms, you have no idea what they mean, but by becoming more aware and using our students, and I'm looking at our student member of the board, they know what's happening. And they have to become a part of the work around addressing those concerns on social media, hearing things, sharing what they're hearing, not sharing it by reposting it, because that creates problems, but sharing it by letting an adult know.
So we also try to take some of that down. We do need to capture, because it's good information. We do need to capture, because it's good information, the challenge is trying to remove it from the internet and social media. And Ms. Lewis just referenced, sometimes some, an event may have happened months ago, and now it's replaying constantly. So I will say, I know that's one of the items that's really frustrating our school leaders, because the social media is just taking a life of its own.
And it's frustrating the parents as well. I mean, not your fault on our end, it's just, it's a really challenging thing to tackle, for sure. My separate, completely different question has to do with the safety assistance, and I apologize if I missed this, but I know they're not SROs, and very clearly, and I believe SROs are trained police officers, these are simply adults who are showing an interest in mentoring and kind of being present in the school, is that, is that kind of the recruitment approach?
That's correct.
And then how are they trained to-
So they have to go through the same 70 hours of training that our school resource officers have to go through with the Maryland Center for School Safety. And so then, in addition to that, they have to go through training that we provide on our policies, procedures, things like restraint, seclusions, use of force, bullying, harassment, intimidation, you know, just a variety of topics that we cover in addition to what is covered by the Maryland Center for School Safety.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Mr. Kuhn.
I want to thank you again for this presentation, very insightful, very, very interesting. I know that this was planned to be presented in May, so that's why there are three quarters. So I'm on the edge of my seat, wondering how quarter four went? Did it go up or taper off, or what happens?
I mentioned earlier, we could sense that things had gone up. Fourth quarter, the sense is, and we're still working through the data, that things have really started to improve. This summer, we're working to make sure that relationships are in place in schools, we're getting ahead of things. Each school this year will be working to have a positive behavior plan in place, it'll be tied into the SPP and worked on by several stakeholders. Again, trying to get ahead of things, looking at what we worked through last year and how we can be proactive in addressing things before they happen. Relationships, as we talk about so often, is a big part of that.
Okay, and to follow up, this is looking across the entire system, and there's a lot of schools, right? Is there, like, significant variation within or between schools? I mean, you can definitely see, like, as they move out of, you know, elementary school, like, issues shoot up, and, I mean, you're throwing lots more people together that were never together before in the middle schools at quite a fun age. But are you seeing, like, any kind of variation, or is it pretty much, you know, you have steady amounts of suspension across all schools out there? I mean, you know, if it was like a magnitude difference, I'm just curious if, or if it's just-
I would say that there is some variability, and that's how we worked with principals to identify the first 20 schools for the pilot, schools that were, you know, willing and interested and wanted to give us feedback on how this would work for the fall, as well as schools that needed some additional adult presence. But there is some variability. There are some schools and students where the students came back, they might have had a few weeks in the beginning, and then everybody got to business, whereas, you know, some schools were more heavily impacted, you know, during the year. And what we're really trying to do is work together this summer to reduce the variability and to pour in those resources right away in the places that need more, which is when Ms. Lewis spoke to the equitable allocation, where we're looking at the size of the school, we're looking at, you know, the needs of the school to provide the resources that they need from the onset.
Well, thank you, because that's exactly the answer I wanted to hear, is you're using the data to identify, here we need to pour resources in and manage the problem and kind of learn from there, so thank you very much.
I would like to add, if you looked at the data that was presented, middle school had an uptick, and if you think about just middle school in general, but then think about the pandemic. So these eighth graders were virtual all last year, and then, or hybrid, and then the year before, they were sixth graders that ended their year. So you think about, the elementary school staff kind of knew the kids, they'd been with them five, six years. Middle school was a different level in that adjustment, and then high school probably took some time, but there was an adjustment as well. That, I just want to remind the board, I requested to our executive directors to really focus on middle school, and they did a responsive middle school summit to talk about achievement, student learning, adjustment, as was mentioned, the orientation, the resources, our community involvement, but also that culture and climate. And then when you then think about middle school, because I was the speaker, and I talked about having three children and a middle child, or growing up, and I'm the youngest, yet there was a middle child, that's just a different person, and it takes time, and they want to be the oldest, or they want to be the youngest, allegedly, because there's that attention. So it was a great two-day summit where our executive directors came together with all of our middle schools, and they brought in a representative, because I felt we needed to focus. The data was saying, we need to look at what we're doing for middle school, how are students transitioning from elementary and then how they're transitioning to high school. And then as Dr. Yarrell said, the variability, there were some that we really need to reset. And as she described, we're all coming together, and let's talk about the code of conduct, and what does that mean? And there's going to be some exceptions. We have to understand, every situation is not cut and dry. There are some things that are, but the complexity of some of these situations really have the administrators spending a lot of time trying to problem solve and come with what we would consider appropriate responses. So I appreciate you saying that, but middle school, we're going to tackle middle school, we're going to tackle it, with your support and resources from the board.
Mrs. Sa.
Thank you. So I had a comment about social media, just because that's something that I've experienced personally, like, I'm a Gen Z, like, I'm in Gen Z, I got it. I can also speak to the benefit of social media campaigns. I ran one for a little bit over a month, and I think something that's very important is that students are responsive also to positive things. So we see, you know, fights being shared all across social media, but I also talked about that a lot during my campaign, I talked about things that were happening, like safety incidents that were happening around the county. I brought it to student attention, and they worked together to mitigate it. They worked together to listen to one another and talk to one another and show up. I had a blackout during my campaign, and I asked students to wear black in solidarity. They did, and then they opened up discussion about that. So I think we really need to consider the power of social media, and not only its detriment. So that's my comment on that. But I also have a couple of questions. So in regards to community partners, how can we collaborate with resources outside of school buildings, just to foster even more student safety and minimize the root cause of these negative student actions that lead to suspensions? I don't know if y'all can answer that, but if you can, I'd love to-
Well, I think one of the things that we do, and actually, Ms. Lewis leads, is a monthly meeting with different agencies where there's communication. Where are the trends that are concerning with groups together? It may be helpful to speak to that, but that communication piece, again, so we're aware of what's going on in the community so we can be prepared in the schools, because if it's going on in the community, it's going to get to the schools and the students.
And so he's referring to the Safety and Emergency Management Steering Committee that has representation from the Baltimore County Police Department, Baltimore County Fire Department, and the Baltimore County Health Department. It enables us to look at safety in a holistic way, so that we're looking at the physical aspects of safety, as well as the mental health aspects of safety, and who are our partners in addressing the issues that we have with our students in our schools. So that's one example of-
I will add that, in addition, our student support teams in the school building, so where our professionals, our teachers, our counselors, social workers come together and talk about, almost like case management, or problem-solving opportunities to talk about needs of students, and then in many cases, to invite the family, because there may be some additional needs at the family. So not only are we looking with those partnerships, we have the collaboration within the building, and as Dr. Yarborough mentioned, and you've heard, more and more of our partners are coming to the table in public comments, just to share what they're doing. I've asked for that, I've asked for that. You had Debbie Phelps to come and talk about the Ed Foundation. I've asked more of our partners to come and tell the board what they're doing and what schools they're supporting. So on July 26, I believe, 27, thank you, the Community Fair will take place for our principals to be aware of the many opportunities. The last count, it was over 600, it's still growing, but I wanted to give those additional opportunities that happen within the building, and also those partners in the school community.
Okay, thank you, and then I have one more just point to bring up. So I think something that's lacking in this discussion, when we discuss school safety, happens to also be sexual assault. That's one of the most important things that students brought up to me. They brought up to me the fact that either they have been assaulted, or they do not feel safe because of those allegations, and I'm not saying, you know, we're fixing that, I'm not saying that we're doing any of that now, but I just, I want to talk about the mental health aspect of that, right? I want to talk about, you know, having those emergency counseling resources, I'm talking about adding telehealth, mental health resources, and making sure that we have, you know, peer-to-peer counseling and points of safe report, and making sure that they're also secure. So I guess, like, that's the one thing that I feel is missing from this discussion, sexual assault, and then I really hope to, as we go on, you know, just keep discussing mental health, because that should be at the forefront of everyone's mind.
Yes, I would just say, this report is really reflecting on what we've done this past year, but I will remind the board, the Maryland Center for School Safety Reporting tip line has been a game changer, because in many cases, we wanted to make sure our students had all resources. But I know, we're going to be talking more about what we can do about sexual assaults, and how to make kids feel comfortable, and how they can report, so we look forward to working with you on that.
And can I add that last year, we did hire a full-time Title IX coordinator, whose work focuses around sexual harassment and sexual assault. And so an entire grievance process was developed for students and for staff, and it's located on the homepage, Baltimore County Public Schools homepage, that link to take you to that information.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Stolus-, excuse me, Ms. Causey, Ms. Stoluski.
I want to thank you for your commitment to improving the enforcement of the cell phone policy, given the pervasiveness of cell phone use in middle and high schools, and its negative effect on, of course, education and mental health. Can you, you know, just get into a little bit of the specifics of how you're going to improve the enforcement of the cell phone policy? Thank you.
So, thank you for raising that. When we met with principals to review the code of conduct, the range of consequences to receive all the feedback, one of the conversations that we had was about the need to discuss cell phones in more detail. So interestingly enough, I think it's tomorrow, or Thursday, that we're meeting with a group of principals to talk about cell phones by level specifically, before we move into next week's conversations. So at the direction of Dr. Williams, we'll be happy to provide more details after we receive their input, but it is definitely on the radar.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Causey.
I'm sorry, just to add, we do work with our unions, and I know Doctors Archit and Ms. Lewis have had many conversations, and that has been a theme. We wanted to have the resource for our students, and I just have to say, it's not all our students who don't know how to utilize their cell phones in their appropriate way. However, it can be a little frustrating for the staff, so I just wanted to echo that, that that feedback, we meet monthly with our union leads, and that feedback has been raised, and we're going to try to tackle that issue as well. Because families want, as parents, you want your child to have that resource, going to school, leaving school, all kinds of activities, but then there's the but, right? So we'll work through it, and I'm so appreciative of the team pulling our principals, because again, classroom teachers, principals, staff, that can be frustrating, so we'll problem solve and provide an update to the board.
Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Mr. Rick Millian, thank you very much for this presentation and for your commitment to-
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just want to thank the team here and Dr. Williams for the commitment to improving school climate and safety and student wellness. I just wanted, and I appreciate the discussion of the board members as well. I wanted to ask quickly, in the slides, five and six, and I believe there's another one, related to suspensions, could you define those? Does that include bus suspensions? Does that include in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions? And if you could just briefly talk about the state law that impacts the limitations of suspensions?
So it's out-of-school suspensions, it could happen on the bus, it could happen in school, it could happen around school, but it's out-of-school suspensions.
Okay, thank you. And is someone able to speak to the state law that limits suspensions in elementary school?
So there are, you have to be careful up to second grade with suspensions. I don't, I can't speak to the law specifically or the code, but it is more difficult to suspend somebody prior to grade second, or to second grade.
Thank you, and I appreciate the conversation about the safety assistance, and also Ms. Lewis for specifying their training. I did just want to follow up and understand, I believe there were 80 or some SROs that went to NASRO and received training?
Yes.
Do you have that number, and that's completed, I believe?
I don't have the exact number. I think it's more around maybe 69, but I would have to check the exact number. But yes, the SROs did have the opportunity, they went to rural Colorado last week, to extend their training around working, primarily working with adolescents, you know, what do they need to know about working with adolescents, as well as laws and practices? Again, they looked at social media as well, as one of the topics for consideration.
Thank you, and we appreciate the commitment of Baltimore County Police and the County Executive and County Council for the funding of the school resource officers and their commitment to the safety of students and staff. Earlier in transportation, you talked about an activity bus pilot. I believe that that can be a great equitable way to support students in giving them these opportunities, additional opportunities, to connect for social, emotional wellness, but also for tutoring. Could you just expand a little bit about how that pilot is going to progress?
Sure. So currently, we have four of those, and we have them in four different high schools. I have the names back there, they escaped me, Owings Mills, Sparrows Point, and a few other schools. And so what they do is allow staff members who do not have CDL licenses to transport students. It could be to a game, you know, a small team, a tennis team, it could be to a match, a math club, et cetera. It can be a group of students who are volunteering for a club, who want to go and volunteer into the community. It allows more flexibility in terms of the staff access, and of course, they are insured and protected, and training is provided, but it also is at no cost to families and to schools. So right now, you know, majority of the time, you either have to try to get a school bus or a charter bus, and that comes at a cost to either the operating budget or directly sent to families. And so our goal is, with your support, for us to continue to expand. So far, the feedback has been phenomenal, everybody loves them, the other principals, when they're getting on the call, they're asking for them. We even talked to our elementary principals about them, because we thought they wouldn't really need them, and, you know, they're raising their hands that they want the expansion. So with the funding, we'll come more, we will be learning from these four schools, and our goal is to make sure that secondary schools have them so we can increase opportunities.
Thank you, and were there plans for screening all students in secondary schools for social and emotional needs, including what the student member spoke to about sexual assault and trauma? Oh, okay, can the question be answered?
We'll follow up, Ms. Causey. I don't know if I understood the question or heard it completely, but if you submit the question, we'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you, really appreciate it.
Okay, that appears to be the end of the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is information items, which include the Corrected FY21 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the financial report for the period ending May 2022, the FY2021 Operating in Capital- the FY 2021 Operating and Capital Budget Schedules, and the Policy Review Committee Editing Conventions and Policies Scheduled for Review for 2022-23. The next item on the agenda is Board Committee Updates, Board Member Comments, and Agenda Setting. First is Committee Updates, and we'll start with the Buildings and Contracts Committee, Ms. Joz. I'm the vice chair of the Building and Contracts Committee, and I'm not prepared to speak on that. The Curriculum Committee, Ms. Mack. I don't think Ms. Mack's been with us today. The Equity Committee, Ms. Scott.
Yes, hi, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry about that, thank you. Yes, we had our Equity Committee meeting, and it was on June 16. And we talked about, the team told us about the recruitment process for teachers. And we saw a slide about what was happening over the summer, what had been happening, and where they, where things stood, and next steps for the future of recruiting teachers to Team B C P S. So, thank you.
Thank you. Equity Committee meeting with the Equity Council, Ms. Scott?
Yes, so we have a council that we meet with, and we basically heard from community stakeholders about what's important, what they would like to see in regards to equity and ways that the school system can work better in a partnership with the community.
Thank you. Policy Review Committee, Ms. Rowe.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, it's late, but I need the whole board's attention, because I'm going to say something important, and I'm going to say it one time. Please look at the policies scheduled for review. It's in the Information section. You'll see that this list is a very long list. It is a list that is two years' worth of policy review policies that we are trying to do in one year. So, to that end, I would like to make some suggestions that I think will help us to actually get through all of this, because over the past year or so, we got behind what we needed to do. And this board has expressed that it wants to add a lot of other policies for review. And if we're going to get through all of it, then we're going to have to do this a particular way. And so, the way that I envision this working, and I've discussed this with school system staff, is that if our area education advisory councils, board members, and particular committee members can start to look at this list and start to read the policies as you see them here, and send me emails, and CC, Ms. Howie, what are your particular concerns with this policy? So that we can begin the process of getting those concerns into the draft that comes to Policy Review Committee. Because what's typically been happening is, these things don't necessarily get into the draft. Maybe they get passed through PRC, maybe they don't. But inevitably, what ends up happening is things are getting kicked from the board back to PRC, or from PRC and back to staff. And that's taking a lot of time, and we're getting backed up. So, I need people to begin this work sooner and get it to Ms. Howie sooner, so that these considerations can happen with staff sooner, so that these things are incorporated into a draft the first time it comes to PRC, so that we don't have to keep recovering the same ground and doing the work. And then, with the opportunity to do that, please don't read the policies for the first time the night before it comes to the board for second reader, and then decide that you're going to make a massive push because you found something you don't like, and kick it back to PRC. Because we have two years' worth of policies to review in this next year. And I'm available as often as the committee wants to meet. But here's the thing, the committee can't just meet five times a month, because the same staff that staff our committee staff the rest of the school system. And they have schedules and lives, too. So, please start doing the work now. The policies for the whole year are here. And that is what I have to say on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Board Member Comments on Agenda Items for Future Board Meetings, and we'll start with Ms. Rowe.
I have no other comments, thank you.
Ms. Causey?
Thank you. I just want to say that, welcome to our new members, Ms. Saan and Ms. Stoluski. I was very happy to attend the swearing-in ceremonies and welcome you both to the board. So, I look forward to being available to assist in any way that I can. And it's always wonderful to have fresh, new voices. Next, I wanted to say that I've enjoyed, even during the summer, some very exciting events, including groundbreaking and also going to the Education Foundation ribbon-cutting for the exchange rate, which is a wonderful opportunity for teachers, not only to come and get supplies that they need, but to also come and get supplies for their students, but also to have collaborative space, to meet together, to meet with others, and brainstorm about improvements and new programs that are happening. So, that was exciting to attend with other members in the board and staff, and Dr. Williams with the ribbon-cutting. So, that was exciting. I just hope that everyone's having a wonderful summer. And I did just want to say, the Legislative and Government Relations Committee that I chair does not meet during the summer, but will be kicking that off in September, October. We're working with new staff on, or, excuse me, with staff on this schedule. And so, there was a lot of tremendous work that was done in the legislature this year to support education, not only with operating funding and with the blueprint, all of the definitions that went into that, but also with capital construction funding and the, you know, various different improvements that happened during the legislative session. So, look forward to starting that up again in the fall, and wish everyone a happy summer.
Thank you. Ms. Mack? I know she hadn't been with us this evening. Ms. Stoluski?
Thank you, everybody, for the warm welcome. I have no other business.
Ms. Joz? Ms. Saan?
I just wanted to thank you all. This is my official first board meeting. This is something that I've thought about for a very long time. So, I just wanted to thank you all for your kindness, for welcoming me here, for making this first board meeting so productive and eventful for me. And also, you know, just, I guess, preface some of the things that are coming up that I will be bringing up to you. Next board meeting in August, I hope to introduce a resolution, the Student Bill of Rights, which will be shared with all of you in advance. You're not going to get it the night before, I promise. It will be emailed to all of you once I have it officially done, ready to go. So, that's just like something to think about prior to us adjourning. Also, please feel free to reach out to me. Please feel free to talk to me. I know that I'm still getting the lay of the land, but I'm here all year. So, consider me your legacy, I guess, on the board. But I am happy to work with each and every one of you. And I'm so excited for a productive year. I'm excited to bring some student voice to the table and hopefully bring some much-needed changes that I can't wait to achieve with all of you.
Mr. Offerman-Lee? Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes, hi. Thank you, and good evening. And I hope everyone has a great evening and welcome to our newest two board members. Thank you.
Dr. Hager?
Thank you, yes. Welcome also to our new board members. I'm really excited that you're both here. And two potential items for future agendas. I know we talked a little bit tonight about later school start times. I think that would be a great thing to dig into a little bit when we're prepared and can have staff speak to kind of where we are now and potentially even our transportation consultant, who has expertise in this area, to talk about kind of how it's worked in other school districts, particularly many districts larger than us, and kind of, again, digging into that. I think that would be fantastic. And then I know I often bring up school meals, but there are a lot of changes coming next year. Today, I received information about my kid's school bucks account and where it stood, because coming this year, not, kids won't be getting universal free meals across the board, who are not attending schools that are not designated as CEP. So, there are a lot of changes coming. And so, I think having some way of ensuring that that message is getting out would be great.
Thank you. And I'd like to mention, on an agenda item, we haven't talked about it in a while, but the whole idea of taking the meetings out to other locations, we've gotten away from that. And I know it's costly, and there's a lot of logistics to it. But if we're not going to do it, just, I want it wiped off the map, and then we won't do it. But if we are going to do it, I'd like to talk about it a little bit more. The last item on the agenda is announcements? Yes. Mr. Coon, yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You read my mind. I was going to just say, your gift is no comment.
Sorry. The last, the last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 9, 2022, at 6:30. Thank you for joining us tonight. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillian.
10:11.